Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public participation.
Good evening, I'm George Brosman. I wanted to ask if the board would consider changing the order of the agenda to move the matter that I have for 205 Stratford Avenue to the front of the Public Works and Engineering Agenda. This is a minor subdivision plan for only five lots. We filed it back in July. We've been to the planning commission three times and before you once before for caucus, and we would hope we could move through it very quickly.
Jim, what's your opinion?
Seems fair to me.
That's okay. That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Sherry, Wayne.
Next.
I'd like to start my comments off tonight talking about a matter that involves the pending ethics complaint against John Nagel. This is a subject matter that was placed in a correspondence immediately following last week's Board of Commissioners meeting. Specifically, and by way of background, my ethics complaint against Mr. Nagel stems from a December 8, 2014 televised Board of Commissioners meeting where, in reaction to me inquiring how much the Radnor Conservancy is planning to donate to preserving our Drossin, John Nagel stated, "Somebody shoot you," to me. As soon as that comment was made, I raised the point of order, and Solicitor John Rice stated as follows. "Mr. Sherry, why don't you finish up? You've got five minutes." Because Solicitor Rice unquestionably witnessed Commissioner Nagel's conduct, my complaint against Mr. Nagel specifically requested that Solicitor Rice recuse himself. Ordinarily, the solicitor is mandated by Radnor's Charter and Radnor's Code to be counsel for the Ethics Board. Solicitor Rice, on January 7, 2015, sent me correspondence, and he stated as follows: "Your demand that I not participate in the Board's inquiry," by that he means the ethical complaint against John Nagel, "is rejected in that my withdrawal would be inconsistent with the township's Home Rule Charter and the Township Code." That's the basis. Not an assertion that he didn't witness the misconduct. I should say alleged misconduct. There may be those in this room or perhaps on the dais that believe that the phrase "somebody shoot you" is particularly appropriate. I then responded to Solicitor Rice and pointed out to him that his refusal to recuse was, lack of a better expression, ridiculous. Being a witness to the conduct was specifically the rationale that Joel Barris utilized to explain John Rice's recusal in that matter. In my email to Solicitor Rice, CC'd the rest of the Board of, excuse me, the Ethics Board, I pointed out that this is what Mr. Barris specifically said when I queried of him at the October 15 meeting why he was present on the dais and not John Rice. Direct quote from Mr. Barris. "John Rice felt that he was a potential fact witness in this matter and therefore did not feel it was appropriate to advise the Ethics Board as its counsel." So even using the narrow parameters of the past five months as precedent, you have a situation where a solicitor, despite being a fact witness, not denying that he's a fact witness, two ethics investigations, one right after each other, is demonstrating 180-degree conduct. It's untenable. So with the appreciation that this board is sometimes slow to query the solicitor in terms of his conduct, I've demonstrated this insofar as his representation of the Ethics Board in the Jim Higgins Ethics Matter, where he apparently recused himself, didn't announce it, it was announced by Joel Barris, and then got back into that litigation despite claiming that he recused, claiming he had an obvious potential conflict of interest, and apparently never coming to this board to waive the conflict. I think it is important for the board to realize that this is going on because continued involvement by Mr. Rice in the John Nagel Ethics Investigation has the potential to further erode the public's trust in the Ethics Board's investigation into this matter. Again, I'll talk about Mr. Rice more in detail when you have your scheduled vote tonight as to whether you wish to have him reappointed as your solicitor for yet another calendar year.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to announce that we had an executive session preceding this Board of Commissioners meeting, January 12, and personal matters were discussed and all Commissioners were present. Next, we have the consent agenda, and we're going to take two items off. Harb 2015-02-319 South Wayne Avenue, in the original certificate, we didn't put the conditions, so we're going to do a, we have the conditions on a new one, which I'll read at the time when we vote on that. And then we're going to take off 201 Walnut Avenue, where I represented the buyer and the seller, and so we're going to vote on that with me abstaining. Is there any other Commissioner who wants to take anything off the consent agenda? Any member of the public like to take anything off the consent agenda?
E.
Okay. Item number E, but you have to come to the mic if you want to take some of the consent agenda. You cannot say it from the audience because the public at home cannot hear you. Okay? Thank you. You want to come up and say that?
Happy to. Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue, E also, E item, please, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent?
I move that we approve the consent agenda without Items B and the second and third bullet point and without Item E.
Do I have a second?
Second, seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is seven to zero. And then I'd like to move the approval of Harb 2015-02-319 South Wayne Avenue with the notes, conditions of approval, approved as submitted with the following two conditions. The gable over the back porch be removed so the shed roof turns around the corner and it's only a hip. The new gable addition roof line does not have the returns. Is that correct? That's what we have to do?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll move the approval of this certificate. Is anyone, someone second?
Second.
Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. Just to clarify, the third item is off of the Harb Walnut Avenue, did I hear that correctly?
No, we're going to approve that. I'm just going to abstain.
Oh, you're going to abstain, okay. Thank you for the clarification on the middle one because I was going to bring it off the agenda for that, but I actually have one item on each of the others. The 201 Walnut also had two minor conditions that were specified by the Harb. Not as, and let me preface this by oath, I have no problems with the renovation of the building, all three presentations were great, this is more a process issue. That was related to the outriggers and the headers over the dormers. So I, and I would be perfectly comfortable if you wanted to pass it based upon what the discussion was at the Harb meeting. Again, I don't have a problem with the actual content of it.
Okay. Thank you.
And with the first one, again, no problem with the content, but the way the application was written, which is new attached garage in place of greenhouse, first off, it would be much clearer to say demolition of greenhouse because that's an important part of our Harb ordinance, but secondly, while the greenhouse was presented at the Harb meeting and picture shown of it, prior to the Harb meeting, the greenhouse was already demolished, which is a process issue that needs to be addressed. Because nothing's supposed to happen until you would grant the certificate appropriateness to get rid of any structure that exists in the Harb.
Okay. Thank you.
So actually, I would, I would like to, if we could get some follow-up with that for next meeting.
Yeah, so the reality is that's already approved, though. We just approved that a moment ago. That was part of the consent agenda.
But you, but your comments-
I didn't know, I thought you were doing that.
Your comments are noted, and Kevin will look into the garage being torn down and forehanding might have been a reason for that.
And by the way, welcome back, Kevin.
Thank you. 1501 was the one with the garage that you're-
100 Pembroke.
It was, yeah, 1501, you're correct. It was the garage in place of the greenhouse. The greenhouse was already demolished. Again, and it's, this is not an issue where that's irreplaceable because you are approving it as the Harb did, but it's just more a process to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to 201 Walnut, do we have anything in writing? Mr.?
Well, we'll get that.
Gemmer has talked about two conditions that are not in the certificate. Do we have anything in writing?
No, all my notes from the file indicate that it was approved as submitted. So I don't have any information, and I have the Harb file in front of me that indicates otherwise.
So if they're, so we don't have to put the two conditions in, they're part of the resolution?
I'm not aware of two additional conditions for that application.
What were the two conditions?
Outriggers and headers over the dormers.
Let's ask Baron. I just want to- I just need to know if the, was the applicant willing to do the-
Yeah, the applicant, again, the discussions were all fine, the applicant was willing, all three applicants were willing, obviously the one that was as submitted was no issue, but-
And Baron, you stated that it was outriggers and headers over the wind-
Heads over the dormers in terms of the sizing of them, yeah.
Well, Kevin, can we add that on the condition that the owner agreed to those?
My only concern is I don't know if that was general discussion because there's a lot of general discussion during the meetings that sometimes don't make it into the formal motion when it is-
So you're saying, you're saying the motion is viable the way it is?
It's my understanding, the motion as it is presented in front of you is accurate.
Yeah, the motion actually made was as recommended approval of certificate appropriateness per the discussion, and that, and right before that were the two items were delineated in terms of what they would, the conditions would be.
Well, discussions one thing, voting on conditions is another.
Well, no, but it was, but the reference in the motion was to that discussion.
Yeah. Kevin, where are we on this?
I mean, I-
I would have to go back and review the tape, I wasn't present at the meeting. What we can end up doing is tabling the specific one and-
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we just approve it with some kind of soft language that covers what Baron identified? And then if, if the applicant has an issue, the applicant, you can look at it and we could undo it, but let's proceed with like a default scenario of it passing.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. I don't want to make that up.
Can you make that motion?
Okay. Baron, tell me the language that you think captures the-
Well, again, I just did the notes because I wasn't sure, because I was more, I actually had more detail on the other one, but it was basically the outriggers, they were using different terms for those, and then the headers over the dormers in terms of the sizing.
So I'll rec, I motion that we, one second, that we augment the certificate to reflect the outriggers and the headers as per the discussion at the Harb, and that if it's non-adversarial, that should be enough to get it done.
I'll second that, but we now have two motions and second, two motions on the floor.
Yeah, that's appropriate, isn't it?
Just so we keep it clear.
All right. Well, why don't we withdraw the first motion?
No, 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 we have two motions on two separate issues, so we just call the vote separately.
Okay, so we have a motion on 319 South Wayne Avenue?
Yes, that was-
I thought we voted on that.
We did not vote yet.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of 319 South Wayne Avenue, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye. All right. And then we have a motion for 215-
So a motion to approve 215-03 for 201 Walnut Avenue, including outriggers and headers as per the discussion at the Harb.
Second?
Seconded.
Second? Any public comment? All right, as I know, I'm going to abstain because I represented the buyer and the seller on this sale, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Abstained, passes six to zero with one abstention. And then Resolution 2015-01, the reappointment of Gannon Fleming as Township Engineer, I'll move that up, resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Any Commissioner discussion? Public discussion?
Thank you, Baron Gemmer, against South Wayne Avenue. It's going to be feast or famine. I'm not opposing the motion, I want two things to be considered in terms of going forward. It's a two-year term, and now it's going to be another two-year term. I think, just like we do with our auditors, that this is an important position that needs to have that same kind of consideration in terms of the watchdog kind of, kind of effort, particularly when it's an outside person, which will be my second point. So I think that should be heavily considered, along with performance, in terms of whether there should be a rotation of the firm, rotation of the engineer, et cetera. So I think that's, that's important because unlike in the financial world where a few hundred thousand dollars maybe can be made up in taxes over the years, you get subdivisions and things go in without a proper review, those are forever, pretty much. So I ask that you consider that. Secondly, per my other reference, I would ask that perhaps also consider down the line redoing the position back to an employed position with support by an engineering firm. So you have a lead person that is employee here, and then the work that gets farmed out and charged the applicants, a lot of that would still go the consulting route, but it would be reviewed by an employee of Radnor Township. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I guess I think that that makes sense, that we should consider that. I guess we would need to have something in the budget going forward to have a, if we were going to bring that back in-house, a township engineer, I suppose, that's kind of too late at this point in the budget bill.
That's not the motion before us, Rich.
Right, but do we, do we have, we don't have, we don't have room to, if we wanted to bring this in-house, would there be the capacity to do that?
We would discuss that, you know, for next year's budget.
I just want to add that this is in the hopper of things that Carfac has on their to-do list, is a financial analysis of what that would mean bringing a, having an in-house engineer again in terms of benefits and whatnot, and whether it would be economically advantageous to us. I don't know if they're working on it now or for the 2016 budget, but that is on their, in their list of things to do.
Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, the work done by Carfac, they, substantially, a lot of it was substantially completed last year due to the turnover in a couple of the positions that'll be relooked at and finished up in '15. With regard to the budget, it's a matter of amending, the board adopting a resolution to amend the budget to include whatever direction the board sees fit. So in terms of making the decision, the decision would be based more on what, what direction the board wants to go, and then we amend the budget accordingly.
Well, there you say, that's the issue, is that you'd have to amend the budget. So it's not in the budget, was my question. There's nothing, there's not the capacity to do it without amending the budget.
Yes, the position would have to be recreated along with the wage and salary schedule have to be amended, and then the appropriations.
And Bill, when, we need to do this before the budget, it's a policy decision, and we'd also have to think about, we're about to renew a two-year contract, and we'd have to think about, you know, how often we would do this. Wouldn't be every, wouldn't necessarily be every year, but it would be, is it two more years now that we?
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak to that. So in the memo, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fisher, either party has the ability to cancel the contract with 60 days' written notice, and as well, and I understand Mr. Gemmer's thoughts, but Gannon Fleming has performed well for us in the subdivision land development reviews, capital plan, capital projects, as well as other areas of expertise and responsiveness. And their firm is very diverse, which allows us to tap them for things outside normal civil engineering issues. As far as revolving, revolving engineers, so to speak, my thought is it should really be based on performance, not moving out one firm just because it's for the sake of moving out a firm.
I think, I'm going to type in-
Another issue is, is that by having, not having on staff, we get reimbursement, right?
I'm going to just augment too, that I think we have moved in the direction that Baron had indicated. Steve, I think you are functioning in large part as the township engineer doing much of the routine day-to-day, relying on Roger's firm to do more of the sophisticated work. I think that's the model that has become the de facto model, and my sense is that when we hire, I think we're moving for, to a stormwater position, that we mimic that form in the stormwater position, in which that person, sort of a low to mid-level engineer becomes Steve's assistant to help him with the, the day-to-day, and Roger's firm stays in its current capacity doing the more sophisticated work that we don't want to have, we don't want to hold the expertise in-house to do that kind of work. So that's my advice on the direction of where I see it going, or where I think it should go.
All right. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. I'd like to move the appointment of John Rice's Township Solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner discussion? Public discussion?
Well, I actually have a comment I'd like to make. I'm going to support the reappointment of Commissioner, of, excuse me, Solicitor Rice. And I, this year, gave this a lot of thought because we have a resident or two who has pretty consistently objected to the Solicitor and his advice. My assessment is that the quality of work that we have received from our Solicitor has been superior, and it has been unbiased and thorough. Every time I have, I've requested the primary sources upon which opinions are based, I've received it promptly, and my, my legal analysis of what's contained therein has comported with the advice we're getting, so I feel very confident about that. I feel very confident that we are receiving advice that is without agenda. This is the firm and a Solicitor who is pretty unconnected to Delaware County and any political party in this county, which is refreshing. Our prior Solicitor was, had been the Chair of a political party, and until recently, the Solicitor for our school district had been the Chair of a political party, which I think is untenable. And I find that having that unbiased, unconnected advice has been very helpful to us. I recognize that there are a resident or two who are, who disagree very passionately and strongly with some of the legal opinions that we've received from Solicitor Rice. I must say that I remain unconvinced by that opposition. My own legal analysis of the advice we are getting is that it is based in the law and firmly based in the law, and I have a great deal of confidence that relying on the opinions that we are receiving from an attorney who has almost 30 years of municipal experience and is backed up by a firm with decades and decades, maybe 100 years of municipal experience, is dependable, and that has been our experience. So I'm unconvinced by the challenges. I've done my own legal analysis of the opinions that we're getting, and I find the challenges that, and the opposition, unconvincing. So I'm going to support the retention. I feel like we are getting very good legal advice, and I have a great deal of confidence in it.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. The individual who has nominated John Rice for reappointment is Bill Spengler, is seconded by Elaine Paul Schaefer. That's actually helpful for making this point. John Rice, for those who may not remember, was brought into this township when the former manager, Dave Bayshore, was kicked out in disgrace and the prior Solicitor left. When it comes to the former Township manager, Dave Bayshore, it's important to note that although at his termination hearing, the board voted 7-0 after a incredibly comprehensive presentation by Tom Masterson that the manager had engaged in absolutely indefensible misconduct, that there was an interesting comment made by Bill Spengler, which was as follows: "I'd write Dave Bayshore a letter of recommendation anywhere." Similarly, at that meeting, Elaine Paul Schaefer, the person who seconded John Rice's renomination, was caught by the press hugging Dave Bayshore at that termination hearing. So lest anybody view Bill Spengler and Elaine Paul Schaefer's support in a vacuum, consider the types of people that they have publicly embraced metaphorically and physically in the past. I'm obviously not comparing John Rice to the type of misconduct attributable to Dave Bayshore, but it's important to view that. Now, with respect to Elaine Paul Schaefer's, I believe, quadruple restated assertion that she's reviewed John Rice's legal research and she's comfortable with the work he's performed, I believe you actually used the adjective "superior." I'd like to talk about a rather high-profile topic that involved John Rice just a couple of years ago, heavily reported in the press. And that was when John Rice informed this board that they could keep a settlement that they had with the Vestiges of Lehman Brothers confidential, a $3.8 million settlement. All of you remember it, all of you were on the board at the time, with the exception of Commissioner Booker. And I believe, given Commissioner Booker's acumen in the field of law, he never would have allowed this to happen, because he knows that you cannot keep confidential a settlement between the Township and another entity. Nevertheless, John Rice told you all that was fine, even though that's black-letter law. And what happened? This Township was vilified in the press and in the Office of Open Records for making an indefensible decision thereafter with respect to these ethics investigations that have occurred. You all remember, it's in the press, it's in public meetings, it's in the YouTube videos about John Rice's refusal to recuse, and then under pressure recusing, and then what's occurred with Commissioner Higgins, which I talked about earlier tonight, and now what's going on with Commissioner Nagel. I bring this up because unlike other elected individuals, you are not stuck with John Rice. You consciously decide whether you want to have him to continue to be this Township's face insofar as legal representation, and there are consequences that come with that choice. Commissioner Fisher, much as I respect you and I agree with you very much, you made the point at the last Board of Commissioners meeting that this board is somehow required to go with Solicitor Rice's advice, and that's not true. You ultimately listen to him, decide whether or not you agree with him, and you can obviously take contrary positions. The point is, how much longer is this going to go on where not only is there just this vote to keep John Rice, but there's no RFP to see what else is out there? Ultimately, the public cannot see what's inside each of your respective minds insofar as why you think John Rice is the right guy for the job. We can point out as members of the public that Elaine Paul Schaefer's comments about how John Rice is the greatest thing since sliced bread is demonstrably silly, but ultimately, each of you are accountable to your votes, the ones that you will cast in a couple of moments regarding this particular man. You obviously can also abstain if you so desire. But to Commissioner Schaefer's last point, that there are a couple people in the Township that are upset with Solicitor Rice's opinions. I can only speak for myself. There are only a couple of topics in Radnor Township that interest me, that I shine a proverbial pen light on, and every single one of those issues, insofar as it's involved John Rice, has gone the spectrum between clearly improper to utterly indefensible in terms of the way that he has conducted himself, and I've demonstrated that as best I can in public and in the press. So tonight, when you're looking to cast your vote as to whether this man should continue to be the face of legal representation in the Township, take that under consideration. How many more times do you want to be put in a position where you have to defend the conduct of the Solicitor rather than the Solicitor being the defense of this Township? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Call a question, all those in favor?
I was going to make a statement.
Please.
I am going, excuse me, I'm going to vote for Mr. Rice. There are three things I look for in a Solicitor. Number one is his legal acumen. Number two, are his opinions and analyses unbiased and independent? And number three, does he produce his work according to the schedule that's required and within the parameters of the scope that is required? And John Rice does all three of those things perfectly well, in my opinion, and I don't agree with virtually everything that Mr. Sherry has said. As Commissioner Schaefer has done, I have also looked at the opinions of Mr. Rice, particularly on the question of last meeting's discussion on the Villanova Executive Session proceeding. And I think Mr. Rice had all the issues properly analyzed and reported. He looked not just at our Home Rule Charter to decide what this board can do in Executive Session, he looked at the municipality's planning code, the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, and the jurisprudence of our, of our courts in Pennsylvania. Unlike another analysis that I saw and- Unlike another analysis that I saw and heard whereby the only look was at the Home Rule Charter. So, and that's just one example of the work Mr. Rice has, in my view, done for this board. He, he's unbiased, he doesn't curry favor with commissioners in rendering his advice, he shoots straight, right down the middle. And he, he does the work on time. I've never had a problem with him. If I asked him for an opinion, I think for the, I can speak for the rest of the board. If we, if we need advice from him, we get it on time, and we get the answer to the question we ask. We don't get an opinion or an analysis on some subject that we did not ask. So, and if you look at Mr. Rice's billings and his hourly rates, they're very, very economical. And for what he charges us, I think we're getting top drawer legal services, and I'm happy to vote for his reappointment.
I'd just make a brief comment also. I was part of the commissioner team that brought John Rice in several years ago. And at that time, the township was facing a lot of very difficult issues surrounding the former manager of the township and other issues surrounding that. John Rice came in and has offered excellent legal advice, excellent guidance through those tough years. I may not agree with John Rice all the time, but I think, like someone said tonight, he gives us legal advice, this board does have the latitude to ignore it, but it would be at our own peril. So we really do need to have a solicitor that we trust. I think most of us trust John Rice. But, you know, like any professional contractor, maybe come a time where it is a good idea to change. But, you know, right now, I'm very satisfied with John, and I hope he's satisfied with me. But I think he's helped this township a great deal, and he's helped, he's helped keep the legal costs down. When some law firms and some lawyers may be interested in building something out of, out of a case, he's more interested in how do we solve this with the least dollars? How do we get this done? So I appreciate that, that point of view. Thanks, John.
And what I would like to just remind everyone is, the law is not black or white. The law is gray, shades of gray. If it was a clear legal question, then we wouldn't ask John Rice to look at it, because it would be clear. The only time we bring our lawyer in is when it's a question that is a gray area. I would also say that it is important, the majority in the makeup of the board, the majority and the president of the board controls the counsel and the solicitor. And I think that it would be naive to say that the majority and the president of the board does not get favor in how any issue is reviewed. So I think that as our legal counsel, he does take direction from the president of the board and the majority of the board. And so I would remind everyone that that is, in fact, the nature of solicitor, is to provide advice that may or may not be accepted by the overall board and may or may not be at peril, right? Sometimes it's just a difference of opinion. And so those are also important factors.
All right, I'll call the vote on the appointment. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Passed at seven to zero. I'd like to move the appointment of John Fisher, F-I-S-C-H-E-R, from Windermere Avenue as the, to the vacancy board.
Second.
Commission of discussion? Public discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passed at seven to zero. I'd like to appoint Township Secretary Bob Zinkowski, our manager. I have a second.
Second.
Board comment? Public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passed at seven to zero. I'd like to appoint Assistant Township Manager Bill White. Make the motion. Is there a second?
That was secretary, Bill.
I'm sorry, secretary.
Second.
What did I say, Assistant Township Manager?
Yes.
That's pretty close.
That may, that may happen someday, though.
All right. Any public comment? All those in favor in the board say aye.
Aye.
Passed at seven to zero. Now we have recognition by the Radnor Police Department.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the commissioners for always allowing us and accommodating us to recognize the employees of Radnor Township, for example, of reservice. At this time, I'd like to call the officers up and the employee from finance that participated in this latest operation. And then I'll explain to the residents of Radnor what happened last month. In Radnor Township, we, we're proud of the quality of life that our residents enjoy, and if someone does something to disturb that quality of life, we take that very seriously. And what we did back in November, my officers and I, we had the township manager's approval, and we sat down and we came up with a list. We compiled a list of people that either committed a crime in Radnor, whether it was a Part I felony crime or a quality of life crime, that was either wanted for a warrant or failed to appear for court. Again, we take the quality of life in Radnor very seriously, and we don't want people to think that they can come to our town, commit these crimes, and never be held accountable. So once we came up with this list of people that were wanted by Radnor Township, we also offered this to three other adjoining police departments as well to participate. We had the help of Mr. Bages, who provided us with a vacant office space on Lancaster Avenue. And we came up with a fictitious governmental location, name, and we sent letters out to these people saying that they were owed money by the government. So what we did was we preyed on their greed, and I apologize, but we preyed on their stupidity. And the officers that you see behind me, all in a plainclothes capacity, acted in various parts, such as secretaries or people that were greeting them to give them the money. We also had people sitting in the audience as recipients for the money as well, so they didn't get suspicious. Amy Lacy, who's from finance, she manned the drop phone that we bought. We had the phone number registered, so if somebody Googled the phone number, it would come up to this fictitious governmental address. And these individuals were calling Amy up at 2:00 in the morning on Thanksgiving, and she never lost her patience, and she was great and accommodating, and she really sucked them into believing it was real. And what happened was these people would show up, they were greeted by what they thought was a secretary, they provided identification, they were taken into the back room, and then they realized the jig was up. The officers wore body cameras, everything was videotaped, and my officer's performance and their conduct was beyond reproach. I'm very proud of them, and we arrested eight people that normally went free or thumb their nose at us, and they're now either behind bars or they paid a hefty fine. So with the commissioner's permission and Mr. Zinkowski's permission, I'd like to accommodate, excuse me, commend these officers, Lieutenant Block, and all the officers and detectives behind me for performing an exemplary act of police service to the residents of Radnor Township. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize another employee, Commissioner Higgins.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Bill. I didn't shake hands with any of our most finest, because I don't want to contaminate them with the cold I've been fighting for two weeks. Kevin Kocansky, our Director of Community Development and Zoning Officer. Please come forward. I want you all to look at Kevin, Kevin W. Kocansky, who's been an employee of the township now for about as long as I've been a commissioner, which is 36 months plus. Kevin recently came back from Afghanistan after serving since last February or March. And we can't ask him what he was doing over there, we just know he was serving his country honorably. And he literally had to give up his, his life to do that for us. He had to leave this job, leave his wife, children, and dedicate himself around the clock to the service of the United States Air Force. So as township, as a Board of Commissioners, we're grateful, Kevin. And I want to read the proclamation that has been signed. Kevin W. Kocansky, come on over. "In recognition of your return home from your recent deployment with the United States Air Force and our heartfelt gratitude for your continued service to our country, presented on January 12, 2015 by the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, William Spingler, President, James Higgins, Vice President, Elaine Schaefer, Ward Four, Richard Booker, Ward Two, John Nagel, Ward Five, Don Curley, Ward Six, John Fisher, Ward Seven, and Robert Zinkowski, no ward, but he is our township manager."
He's our ward.
We've all signed this, and I want you to take this home, show to your wife and children, and get it framed, and
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Look at it, and consider that you have earned it, and we're grateful. If you want to say anything, please do so.
It's just something that I enjoy to do. It is a pleasure, serving the country. I take great pride in that and do appreciate all the support that I adhere from my staff, from Bob and his staff, and from you commissioners. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I'd like to move for the adoption of ordinance 2014-20, authorizing a handicapped parking space on the north side of Drear Lane and Williams Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any commissioner comment? Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Passed at seven to zero.
Bill, we missed the, we skipped over the appointments to boards and commissions.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
That's okay. I'll move to appoint Martin Heldring to the Carfac Committee and Robert Temco to the Rental Housing Appeals Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second them.
Wait, who's second? Wait. Don, you second? Commissioner comment? Public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Passed at seven to zero. All right, Jimmy, you go to Public Works, and you're going to start out with 205 Stratford Avenue.
Yes, we have a proposed subdivision development at 205 Stratford Avenue. This is a caucus-only, I'm sorry, this is, this is final approval. We have the applicant Benson Homes, represented by Mr. Beau Erickson, his engineer, and his counsel, Mr. Brosman. So would you like to come forward and summarize things for us?
I'm George Brosman, representing the applicant. Thank you for moving us ahead on the agenda. You saw this back in October. It's been to the Planning Commission three times. They recommended approval. It's an existing home on Stratford Avenue. The lot would be subdivided into five lots. One lot would contain the existing home. There'd be another home on the one side of the existing residence, and three other homes that would front on Eagle Road. We're okay with the resolution that the solicitor has prepared. One issue did come to light this afternoon. John Rice had let me know that we have a sewer line running through a very small area of man-made slopes that was created in connection with the driveway that was built for this home. And we weren't aware that this was an issue, so I had given John Rice some language to deal with it. But in a nutshell, the ordinance provides that if you can show that the man-made slopes were created as a result of complying with your grading ordinance, that the sewer line is allowed in the steep slopes. So I've prepared language for John Rice to take a look at that would recognize that if we can demonstrate that, we believe that we will be able to, that the sewer line can remain there. And if we cannot demonstrate that, we would have two options. One would be to relocate the sewer line, or the second would be to obtain a special exception to allow it to be in the small band of slopes, because it is a permitted use in the slope area, but one by special exception. So we're okay with the resolution. We would just ask for that one condition to be added to deal with this issue we just found out about a couple of hours ago.
Don, you all right with that?
Yeah, well, let me just, and Kevin, Kevin can jump in too. Kevin and I had a conversation. He called out this additional issue on the plan, so I let George know to be prepared to address it tonight. And the additional condition, and George, I, I have this, I made a few changes to it. So I'm going to read this additional condition. Essentially, they're either going to have to relocate the line, prove that the ordinance doesn't apply, or go to the zoning hearing board for a special exception to put the sewer line through a, what we think is a steep slope area. But the condition would be phrased as follows. "With regard to the sanitary sewer lines shown through an area of steep slopes, the applicant will either demonstrate that the sewer line is permitted, is permitted within the steep slopes in accordance with Code Section 280 hyphen 112, or secondly, relocate the sewer line outside of the steep slope areas, or if that's not possible, obtain a special exception under Section 280 112N." So either way, I mean, he's got three options to address that. One is prove that the ordinance doesn't apply. And the issue of man-made steep slopes, George, as you know, is a debatable issue. So it either doesn't apply, or he's got to relocate the line, or he's got to get a special exception. And that was the, that would be an additional condition, subparagraph F, to the resolution.
Any commissioners have any questions?
John, who would determine that it doesn't apply?
Mr. Kocansky. I would work with the applicant to review any documentation that they wish to provide and do some research. Unfortunately, this came to my attention later this afternoon, and we didn't have enough time to really dig into it. But talking with Mr. Brosman, that's something that, there are three options that they can potentially resolve this matter, if it is a matter that needs to be resolved.
Very good. Well, I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
What is this drawing that we have here? Why did we get, is this different, that's in our packet, and what's the difference? This was at the place.
Are you reviewing this, or what you have?
At, at our seat, our seat here on the dais, we got another revised drawing. Just wanted to know what the difference is between this and what's on our plans. Is this the sewer issue, or is this something different?
It's just a Bilko door.
Yes, what that issue is, you'll note on the, on the Approval Resolution 1D, as in dog, there was an issue about whether a Bilko door to the existing home could remain in the setback. So we've already revised the plan to move the setback line so that the Bilko door is not in the setback. So this condition, as worded, is fine. One of our options was to eliminate the encroachment, so we were showing that we can do that and no variance will be needed. And we've already done that. That's what that plan is.
Would that mean you would, you would eliminate paragraph D from our proposed resolution?
I talked to John Rice about that. We felt that it was fine, because one of the options was to eliminate the encroachment, and we believe we've done that by amending the plan.
I have a process question. After, one of, I think it was the last time you were in front of us, or maybe two times ago, the plan changed pretty significantly, because one of the commissioners requested or suggested using Eagle Road for driveways, and you accommodated that. It did not go to planning, back to Planning Commission after that. And I, my question is, probably And I, my question is probably more for our staff than for you. What would, what, I mean, that's a pretty significant change. We never got input from Planning Commission on the suitability of that in that area. What, in an ordinary case, what is a change that's significant enough to bring it back there?
I mean, normally, it would be some either greater or lesser number of lots, some total lot configuration, if you're putting a public road in. Public road may be going in a different direction than what's shown on a plan. I believe, and, well, Kevin was not here, but I believe the Planning Commission, or at least the idea of having the rear access, came from the Planning Commission.
Oh, is that right?
And then you changed that and directed the applicant to take that rear access driveway off of the plan, because that created some other issues, zoning issues, and bring the, those lots with frontage out on Eagle, onto Eagle. So it would have to be, you know, it's not every change goes back to the, it would have to be pretty substantial.
Okay. And then my other comment, I don't want to rehash this, I'm not going to rehash this. I am not going to support this, because I still feel, and I gave my viewpoint last time pretty clearly, about the 80-foot right-of-way. I think it's a mistake not to retain that and to give the waiver on this particular part of our township. I realize I'm a minority there, but that's, I feel strongly about it, and for that reason, I will not be voting for this.
Any other commissioner comment?
Well, I can wait if somebody else wants to speak first. But if nobody does, then I, what I'd like to do is go through some of the conditions to make sure the public understands what we're doing here. Some of them look like we're taking a very radical step, and I want to make sure I understand why we're doing these things. So, if we could look at the proposed resolution. Article 1A, it says, "Applicant shall provide stormwater, additional stormwater management on Lot Number 2 in a manner to be approved by the township engineer." I spoke with Mr. Phillips of Gannett Fleming today, and he informed me that residents living on West Avenue did express concern to the Planning Commission that there were runoff problems from Lot 2. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Phillips, does Article 1A solve that problem?
Yes, and if, I would ask the applicant if they have a copy of the plan that they could put up onto the board that shows what was done for Lot 2. The Planning Commission had requested that stormwater management be provided for Lot 2. Under code, it's not required for Lot 2, since it's an existing residence, and the applicant has agreed to put in stormwater control. And what they have done is created a, an infiltration bed in the back. And I'll let the applicant's engineer describe exactly what they are intending to put in there.
Thank you, Roger. Chuck Dobson from Inland Design, engineer for the applicant. Roger's correct. We had originally designed the stormwater for the project to be maintained and to comply with the township's requirements on the new lots only. There was some residents from West Avenue who expressed some concern relative to the amount of stormwater that they're getting now. So the Planning Commission had asked us if we could put additional measures onto Lot 2 to further reduce the amount of stormwater runoff from the site, which is well in exceeding some of the compliance with the ordinance provision. So we've done that. Effectively, we've eliminated just about all of the stormwater running off the site after construction.
So you've taken steps that are not required by our code?
That's correct.
Okay. And you've done tests to make a judgment that there won't be any more stormwater runoff, or will be minimal, or what exactly?
It's going to be greatly reduced beyond what the ordinance already requires. So we've provided the calculations to the engineer, he's reviewed them, and, you know, the calculations are in the township's archives, so they speak for themselves.
All right. I'd like to move on to Paragraph B now. "The applicant is going to contribute and must contribute $1,500 toward the repair of existing streetlights along the property road frontage." I believe that is, that is Stratford Avenue, is it not?
That's our understanding.
Yes.
C, "The application," well, it's the applicant, "shall install a vegetative buffer strip between the sidewalk and the street in order to increase infiltration of stormwater runoff." I believe that's Eagle Road, is it, is it not?
It's actually along both road frontages. There was, at the Planning Commission, there was discussion about the need for sidewalks. After it was determined that sidewalks were the preference of the Planning Commission, the discussion went to where should they be? It was, after a lot of discussion, it was determined by the Planning Commission that they would prefer to see a green, a three-foot-wide, non-imperious strip between the edge of the road and the sidewalk to facilitate any stormwater that may be generated from the road or from the sidewalk that currently isn't there. So that, that green area is shown, so we have the sidewalk shown along both frontages, and they are setback from the road three feet per the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
And the purpose of that is to improve infiltration?
It's just to encourage infiltration wherever we could. The Planning Commission felt strongly about that, the applicant agreed, so that's what we did.
All right. Paragraph D, we've already talked about that. And then E is, "The applicant will pay a fee in lieu of $500 per tree." I think that should mean, that means pay a fee in lieu of, of $500 per tree for the 12 required canopy trees not provided for on the plan pursuant to SALDO Section 255-38. And why, why are you not planting the trees, and why are you providing money instead?
We had the, we went to the Shade Tree Commission a number of times, and after significant discussion, it was determined that the amount, the tree replacement requirements in the township's ordinance are rather robust. It was determined that, you know, the plan that's in front of the, in front of the township for approval represented the best all-around landscaping plan that we could come up with. It was the recommendation of the Shade Tree Commission that for those trees that we couldn't fit, because effectively, we're putting too much back, that the applicant would pay the fee in lieu, and the applicant agreed to do that.
Was there any significant, or any opposition at the Planning Commission level to that approach?
No, there was not.
F is that the, you will pay the required park and recreation fee of $16,535, and that's pursuant to the subdivision ordinance, Section Can you explain what that is? What's that for?
Yes. The ordinance requires that for residential development, that there be either park and recreation area set aside for the proposed lots, or a fee for those lots be paid to the township. The fee, I don't remember the exact number of the fee, but it's about $3,300 a lot. So for the five lots, the applicant agreed to pay that fee in lieu.
There's not space there for you to dedicate open parkland?
Well, in an earlier version of this, we had tried to set aside an open space area and call it parkland, but it wasn't something that, that was able to be sustained, so they agreed to pay the fee in lieu.
All right. Paragraph 2 is our standard, paragraph 3 is standard, 4 is standard. Now, we get to 5. Here's where we get into the issues that I think are a little bit controversial. "In addition to the terms and conditions of approval, the following modifications of the subdivision land development ordinance are approved." Section 255-27C1 to permit a 60-foot-wide right-of-way for Eagle Road, and that's instead of an 80-foot-wide right-of-way. And I think the background here is that our ordinance says when a subdivision is proposed and then approved, the developer has to make changes to the right-of-way, and that's to accommodate future expansion of the cartway.
Right. We discussed that at length at the caucus, and I had provided case law. Mr. Rice was familiar with it, that basically said that we could not be required to give that, that right-of-way. And I should note that the Planning Commission and the traffic consultant for the township was comfortable with the additional right-of-way that we were giving. So most people involved thought that the 60 feet was as much as you would ever need. I know Elaine didn't agree with that, and Mr. Norsini didn't, but the Planning Commission did, and Ms. Kaminski did, as I recall. So that basically, the 60 feet was more than you would need, and we felt like that was a good compromise, because we did not believe we were legally required to give it in the first place. And it was also consistent, you might remember, we showed diagrams of the properties going up Eagle Road, and we showed that you could never do the 80-foot right-of-way up there, because you would be into the people's living rooms. So we thought that this was a very good compromise. So that really gets to the first couple of issues there on the waivers.
Yeah, I don't know that you'd be into people's living rooms, George, but you would go, you would take 10 feet more on the north side of Eagle, and you would take 10 feet more on the south side, and that would put you up close to the, to the houses. The other thing that, which is sort of an anomaly, would be that if we required this, it would be a total truncation of the situation. It would run from the blinker light at Eagle and Stratford, and then it would, it would run east from there, just to the end of your, of Benson's property. And so you'd have this wide right-of-way to that point, and then you'd be back to the current old-fashioned right-of-way, which is only 60 feet from there until the end of Eagle Road.
Right. And it's actually 40. You don't even have the 60 up further on Eagle Road.
Okay, it's 40. That's the old, all right. Then, "To permit the proposed right-of-way with and cartway with," well, that's just another section of the SALDO that covers this issue. "Then to waive curbs along existing streets, including Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue."
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission...
Is that good for the public, or is that only good for the developer?
We felt that it was good, the Planning Commission was okay with it. Not all the properties in the vicinity have curbs.
None of those, none of them have curbs in this area.
And we, we were doing the sidewalks, and we, we did the additional stormwater. We moved our driveways, so we felt that they weren't needed, and it was a reasonable accommodation.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, maybe another board member does, but I think as long as we're getting sidewalks, to me, that's, that's the big achievement on this development. And then D has to do with what Commissioner Fisher was pointing out. At the caucus session, we asked you, and you agreed, to reverse the positioning of the lots 3, 4, and 5 on Eagle Road, so that instead of the rear ends facing Eagle, the fronts of the houses would face Eagle. And as I look at your drawing, that's what, that's what it shows, and then I also look at the drawing that it's Lot Number 3, the driveway will come out onto Stratford. In contrast to 4 and 5, the driveways there will go out onto Eagle.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, that's a big improvement, by having the houses reversed, in my judgment. And then lastly, is this, this is about a traffic impact study. I'll ask Mr. Phillips what, I know he didn't, well, we have our traffic engineer with us tonight. Is that a waiver that's sound, or radical, or insignificant? What?
No, I think that the waiver, there was a contribution that we were looking for to spruce up the traffic signal at the intersection right at Eagle and Stratford, the flasher. And then we were also looking for some improvement on the light fixtures that were there.
But this F is a study, so what you just talked about is not a study, it's real hard improvements.
Yeah, I don't think there's, there's not much to be gained, because of the limited amount of houses that are going in there. So it was, it was a better use of the money.
Yeah, not even, not even, needed, not necessary. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comment?
Is there, in light of what we've talked about today, and the failure to show the utilities in the sewer line, shouldn't we revise the plans to show all underground utilities and clearly mark those, so as not to have any disruption of service?
They are, they are shown on the plan. The issue that came up just a couple of hours ago was that a small part of them are through a very small part of man-made slope, that's the side of the driveway for the existing home. So the sewer system is solved, just the question of how do we go through those slopes? We believe we'll be able to demonstrate to Mr. Kachansky that it's permitted under the ordinance. Because if we can show that that driveway was, was built with the permission of the township through those slopes, then your ordinance says that that's allowed. It's a very minor, small area. If we can't make that showing, then we have two options. One is just to move the line slightly, or the last one is to get a special exception from the zoning hearing board. Special exception as a form of a permitted use. So I see it as a very minor technical issue that's really not going to change anything significant in our plan.
Jim, will you make a motion to approve?
All right. I have, I must, I must mention one thing. I took Johnny Mike. Sorry. I have to mention one thing. I got an email very late in the day today from one family on West Avenue, and I'm going to read just an excerpt from it. "The owners have the right to develop property but must do so within the existing code. Arguments against this development were not based on," that's at the Planning Commission now, "were not based on outdated zoning, and we should not approve this if we think the right-of-way or the code is outdated and should or could allow this type of plan. Developers and landowners should put forth plans that meet the code. Providing any waivers or exceptions in this instance and allowing the plan to move forward will provide no direct benefit to the neighborhood, even considering the in lieu of contributions to tree and parks and rec funds which may not end up our, our district, in our district or neighborhood. I also think waiving the right-of-way is a slippery slope. Radnor should be thinking very long-term." And then lastly, "The development does not fit in the neighborhood." You may want to comment on that in a minute.
No, we're not going to comment.
"We have yet to realize what the actual impact from the large townhomes on Stratford is." That's your other development, Mr. Erickson. So that is signed by Stephen Elliott at 416 West Avenue, and he's writing in behalf of the Carries and the Browns.
Do you want to make the motion, or do you want someone else to make it?
I'll make the motion. I, I've looked at everything. I've looked at the drawings, the language of the resolution, the conditions. I think this, this is a development that's suitable for the neighborhood. The developer has rights under our laws to develop, and so I will move the passage of Resolution Number 201502.
Second? Does it say second?
Yeah, I'll second it. We also need to add the paragraph that Mr. Rice identified.
With the, with the new condition, 1F.
With the new condition.
Right.
Okay.
Be 1G, correct?
1G?
All right, I amend my motion accordingly.
Okay, second. Any public comment? Gentlemen, want to step aside? Thank you.
Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. Like Commissioner Schaefer, I share some concerns about the process, particularly toward the end here, but I won't use this time to talk about those, either at the end of the meeting or at a subsequent meeting, and talk about them more generally. With that said, there's been quite a number of issues that have come up in the past month and a half, and the applicant has made quite a number of plan changes to accommodate the zoning, not necessarily the SALDO, but the zoning. Thank you for the sanitary sewer and the steep slopes. I was going to bring that up if that hadn't already been brought up. Partially, the reason that it's so late in the game is the steep slopes weren't even marked until, I believe, a few weeks ago. The one issue that still remains from a zoning perspective on Lot 4 here, this is only 18 feet wide, and each dwelling needs to have two parking spaces, which would be 20 by nine and a half. So either this would need to go to be 19 feet wide instead of 18 feet wide, or conversely, even though you wouldn't park this way, I believe if this were extended another foot that way, you'd have 40 feet between the end of the garage and the front yard setback to virtually say that they were stacked parking spaces, even though that's not the way they would be used. But right now, this, this would not comply with the parking per zoning.
Baron, what is the required parking for that dwelling?
Baron, what is the required parking for that dwelling?
It would be two, two parking spaces each, nine and a half by 20.
And you included the garage space?
Yes.
And then the driveway?
As I said, since it's only 18 feet wide, there's no way that two spaces could be side by side. So alternatively, even though you wouldn't do it that way, you could do them end to end. And I don't have the measurement, but it looks like it's like 38, 39 total. So if they were to move the end of the garage a little farther, that would comply that way, even though they would park side by side. But that's after, there was quite a number of issues that had already been resolved. That's the only one that I, on a quick review, still see that remains.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On the issue of the parking, there are two spots in the garage. The garage is 20 by 20. So there's two in the garage. There's additional parking in the large driveway, but we don't need to count them. We have two in the garage.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Pass is five to two. All right, Jim, you have the next one? Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is item B. Took it out of order. This is the preliminary, it's a caucus, preliminary approval. The applicant is BMR and the project is 145 King of Prussia Road. This is what's commonly referred to as the Biomed property. Formerly Wyeth and Centicor were the owners. The applicant is here in force and then counsel, Mr. Canelia is leading.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Nick Canelia representing Biomed Realty Trust. We'd like to thank you because actually we have an opportunity now to present this plan after many years of discussion. So what you'll be seeing tonight is actually the first time you've seen this plan in detail. First, I'd like to just present the team. As you said, there is a number of people here this evening. Firstly, we have Mike Devine, who's a senior director of leasing and development for Biomed Realty. You've seen Michael here before. He'll be just giving a brief opening statement for the project. Also present is Ross Cole, who's the architect on the project and planner from the architectural firm of BAM Architecture Studio. He'll be doing the bulk of the presentation here this evening. We also have John Witchner, a traffic consultant, an engineer from the firm of McMahon and Associates that you've seen here previously, has testified many times before this board, as has Alex Tweedy, the project engineer from the firm of Nave Nul. Also here for the first time this evening is my co-counsel on this matter, George Crosherlick from the law firm of Duane Morris in Philadelphia. In developing this plan that you have before you this evening, Biomed took into consideration the recommendations of the township staff, the recommendations of Ratu, the land planner, of the zoning officer, of Delaware County Planning Commission, and even in some respects to Brandywine's own land planner. As a result, we designed a plan in accordance with township's existing PLO zoning ordinance and it's a fully compliant plan with zoning based on the 46-year-old zoning ordinance in effect in the PLO district. I'd like to tell you a little bit about history too on this. In 2009, the township approved a plan for this site consisting of 475,000 square feet. That plan consisted of building lengths similar to the building lengths that you see here this evening, as well as an above-ground parking structure and subsurface parking as well. That was approved by this township in 2009. In March of 2014, Biomed submitted a sketch plan for review by all the township staff and Delaware County Planning Commission. That plan called for a gross square footage of 572,000 square feet. The plan again indicated the same parking, the same building length, the same spacing, the same offsets as currently depicted on this plan. There were no negative comments that had violated any zoning restrictions from the township, Delaware County Planning Commission, or any other reviewing agency. In June, the township's land planner, Steve Gabriel through Ratu, submitted a sketch plan. That sketch plan again was a fully compliant plan in their, in their opinion and it had 500,000 or 503,000 square feet of office space, again with subsurface parking. Finally, we took all these plans together and came up with our plan, which is a fully engineered plan that shows 550,000 square feet of office space. It has subsurface parking, as you'll see. Again, this is a reduction from our previous sketch plan that had actually 572,000 square feet. Again, it's a fully engineered plan. We attached buildings as permitted in the zoning code. We provided the required setbacks. We provided the required offset as permitted in the zoning code. Hence, you have the plan before you for 550,000 square feet this evening. Finally, we've addressed all comments from the township staff. We've handed up letters. We've addressed comments made by one of the opponents of the project as far as legal issues are concerned. And there's also been significant misstatements and misrepresentations made throughout this whole process. We hope to clarify that and set everyone straight on what the real facts on this project are this evening. So first, I'd like to call Mike up and he's just going to have a brief opening statement.
We don't need it yet, right? Yeah, sure. Good evening. Again, my name is Michael Devine. I represent Biomed Realty and I've been a resident, not in Radnor Township, but in this area for 50 years. And I know Radnor Township well. My kids played on the lacrosse fields at Radnor High School in the rec league. We appreciate the opportunity to present our current plan for Radnor Park located at 145 King of Prussia Road. Our goal continues to be to turn a now obsolete eyesore, which some call the Big Green Monster, into a beautiful new Class A office campus that will make all of us in this room proud. As you know, Biomed is a best-in-class national real estate company. We are New York Stock Exchange Public REIT and we own close to 17 million square feet of space all over the country and the Cambridge, U.K. Some of the markets that we in, that we're in is Cambridge, Massachusetts, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the Research Triangle in North Carolina, Palo Alto, California, and San Francisco, California, San Diego, California, Seattle, and Princeton, New Jersey. We have a strong track record in designing campus environments that provide a sense of place and belonging to its occupiers and inspire innovation and collaboration. And we're going to show you how we did that today at Radnor. When finished, this new campus will attract high-quality tenants, corporate users, who like Biomed, will be long-term good neighbors in the community. Radnor Park will attract more of, the best and the brightest to Radnor Township. In addition, Radnor Park will bring real economic benefits to the community, including over 750 construction jobs, 1.2 million net annually to the school district, $400,000 net annually to the township, and untold revenues to the businesses, stores, and shops that we, that we are adjacent to. We would like to point out tonight that the presentation and the plan that you are about to see full, is fully compliant with the existing PLO zoning that has existed in your township for close to 45 years. Again, we thank you for the opportunity tonight and I'd like to turn it over to Ross Cole, our architect and planner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for taking your time this evening to be able to see us. I'm Ross Cole. I'm one of the architects, leading the team to put together the design that we're about to present to you. What I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview, a roadmap of what we'll be presenting this evening. And the first thing I'd like to start with is the existing conditions of the site itself that Biomed purchased a few years back and has been wrestling with what to do with that site since they purchased the site, which I'll show you is a bit neglected and I think most people are familiar with that. Then show you what our vision is for turning that site right now, the way it exists, into something that's much more of a real, strong campus feel to it. Then finally, we'll go into the building footprints and some of the analysis that we had done to be able to speak directly to the compliance with the code issues, address the public comments that people had raised, some of which we think are really just confusing rather than being factually correct. Talk about parking and then finally talk about the transportation aspect of the project. So with that, I have up on the screen the existing conditions of the site. One of the things that has been mentioned about this site in the past is that it really is a Class A site. The problem with the site is that it has what generally in the market for the type of tenant that Biomed likes to attract, which is really a best-in-class tenant, is that it's a D-minus group of buildings that are in there for a whole slew of reasons that I won't take up your time going into now. You can see that the buildings themselves have a very industrial look to them. They have a very fortress look to it. You know, the green building was nicknamed the Green Monster and I think it was nicknamed that for a good reason. And the area around the buildings looks like a sea of asphalt. So right now, it's just not a very friendly environment to be around and I don't think it really represents what Radnor wants to be or what Radnor sees itself being in the future. What we looked at was the gloominess of it, the insensitivity to the site, and also the fact that the buildings themselves are very timeworn. And again, it comes back to the issue of what a best-in-class tenant would be looking for an environment like that. What I'd like to do is draw your attention to that image that's in the lower right. And the reason for that is because what I'd like to do now is really transition into what our vision is for creating a campus and not just simply putting a building on the site. You'll see that this is a view that's taken from generally that same location and we thought this would be an important place to start for this project because one of the things that is very important to us as designers is to really try and respect the environment that we're working within. One of the key things about this site is that the way that the buildings are sighted on the site and the vegetation that exists on the site is something that, there are certain aspects to it that we think work really, really well. And one of those is that buffer that we have between King of Prussia Road and where the buildings occur. So you'll see that in this slide compared to the ones that you saw a minute ago, we're really trying to respect that vegetation that's in the front area of the site and really give that strong sense of community and buffer to what you're seeing here. Now, as we go into the site, we get a little bit more forward-looking with the architecture that we are proposing to use here and there's very deliberate reason for that. If we're going to be able to attract a tenant that is the type of tenant that wants to be a very forward-looking corporation, which is what most of the companies are in the race to try and do these days, they're looking for an environment that reflects that same sense of transparency, that same sense of lightness, of technological advancement. And that's precisely what we're trying to show in these images that you've got up over here. One of the other things that hopefully you'll notice is that there's very little asphalt shown. What we've done instead is we've been very careful about what materials we've been choosing and you'll see that there's a lot of grass, a lot of greenery, something that's very pedestrian-friendly as you approach the site, to be able to really see how that building or set of buildings really transforms the site that we're looking at today. As we look a little further between the buildings, one of the things that we're really trying to do here, most importantly, is that create that sense of campus. And you'll see this is a view between two of the groups of buildings that shows a strong emphasis towards being able to make this a very pedestrian-friendly campus. You'll see that this is an environment where we could have simply put in asphalt and a sidewalk and called it a day. And instead, what we did was we really looked at what can we do to try and make this as collaborative and encouraging environment as possible for the types of tenants that Biomed is trying to attract to the site. So you'll see we've got sculptural effects that are anticipated in there. We were very careful about what sort of materials are underfoot. We also have benches and other things in there that will, are intended to really attract people to be able to utilize the site in a very collaborative way, which most corporations are really hankering for these days, as well as the integration of greenery, not just simply around the perimeter of the site, but also woven throughout the site between the buildings, which we think is a very important aspect to all of this. And all of these things, we think, are the types of things that are critical to attracting those best-in-class tenants and their employees. This is a shot of what we refer to as the pedestrian main street, which is that primary pathway that is between a group of the buildings. And you'll see that, again, similar to that last slide that you had seen, the intent with this is to create an area that invites people to communicate, to collaborate, to walk, to enjoy the environment, to interwo, interweave that sense of greenery into the area, and most importantly, to really create that sense of campus that I was emphasizing a moment ago. And then lastly, as far as the initial imagery goes that we wanted to show you, is this is on the north end of the campus. So this is the approach that's actually not too far from where the transit stop is located. And you'll see that in this image, one of the things that we're trying to do is create something that respects the zoning code requirements and uses that to our advantage to be able to create something that has a very friendly, very human scale to it. So unlike what you have there right now, which looks very cold and very fortress-like, you can see that as you approach the buildings, there's this sense of liveliness to it, there's this sense that there's a transparency, a sense of natural light, and clearly a sense of a technological focus forward to be able to really attract the best and brightest for the race that most of the corporate tenants are in the market today to be able to, to achieve and make it as friendly a place as possible. So with that vision set for the campus, I'd like to show you some of the analysis that we had gone through. So the slide that you're seeing here has three images on it. The image on the right, excuse me, the image on the left is a satellite image of the general vicinity where the PLO district is located, the general commercial district for the neighborhood. The image in the middle shows the 2009 approved plan. And what's, we've done here is we've simply taken away what we describe as all the visual clutter in the analysis that we do as architects, which is that the blue images that you're seeing on the screen, and I'm just seeing if the pointer works here. Guess not. The images that you're seeing on the screen are the footprints of the existing buildings. The areas that you'll see that's in the slightly gray color on there, hopefully you can see that, it looks a little bit stronger on my screen when this was being prepared, is the PLO district. So this is a combination of the PLO and the PB district. But what you can see is the existing buildings of those footprints for the majority of the area. And in the lower right of that 2009 plan are the four buildings that make up the current site. And if you look at the last image on the right, you'll see that nothing has really changed with the exception of we've reconfigured the buildings, those four buildings that I mentioned that are in the lower right of the middle image. And the four buildings that are in the lower right of the proposed image, you'll see that there's now an L-shaped building there. There's more distance between the four buildings that are on the site, which I think is a critical thing that makes this environment so much friendlier than what we originally had. And most importantly, you can see how it fits into the context of the existing buildings that are in this neighborhood in terms of their footprint, in terms of their size, their shape. And so we think that this is an important slide from the point of view of showing, A, the impact on the general vicinity and showing how subtle we believe that it is, but more importantly, how it is very consistent from a massing perspective with several of the other properties and in fact, actually does things much better than some of the other properties, which I'll explain why in just a second. On this slide, what we wanted to just run through quickly is this is the existing site. So you'll see that the large box that's in the middle or in the top, where's the top of the slide in the middle, is what I was referring to before as the, the Big Green Monster. And then we've got the low building that's in front of the site and then the smaller building that is just to the upper left on the site. This is the 2009 plan that was approved by this board and this blue box that you're seeing is the roughly 100,000 square feet plus that was approved back in 2009. And the red that you're seeing with that is some subsurface parking as well as a parking, structured parking that is above the surface that was approved as part of that plan. And we think that's important because when we started this design process, one of the things we did was we looked at historically what has been found to be acceptable in Radnor and tried to respect that. Looking at this slide, what we've done is something that most folks in the design field will recognize who deal with planning, is we've just simply looked at what the envelope is that we can work with. So we've got the perimeter of the site itself and the orange or slightly orange color that you're seeing there is the volume that we can work with to be able to create a building. The gray area outside that is the area that is for the parking zoning, to be able to allow for parking within that environment. And so from that, what we've done is we've carved out of that what we understand is what the zoning is intended to what the zoning is intended to allow us to provide. And that's precisely what you're seeing here in this picture. From that orange box that you saw a minute ago, we carved out those green areas that run between the buildings, we've added greenery in front of the buildings, and we've also worked with the massing of the buildings to be able to address some of the various zoning requirements. So this is that same image that you had seen in plan view, and this was prepared by Nave Noel, the civil engineers who we've been working with quite successfully. And it gives you a sense of how much there is on that site to offer if we just really unlock it properly. What we found most interesting, if I go to this next slide, is independently of what we were doing, the town had hired Ritu to do an analysis on what they thought was allowable for the site. And this is a plan that some of you may or may not have seen, this was done, I think, about a year ago. And you can see the way that the plan is laid out here with a similar configuration in terms of what is allowed by zoning. So what we found was interesting was when you look at what we're proposing versus what Ritu had come up with, the only difference between those two plans is simply the fact that we have grouped the buildings together, whereas the Ritu plan shows the buildings individually separated from one another. We think that the code clearly addresses that in terms of the groups of buildings, and I'll go through that analysis in just a minute. But most importantly, on our plan, you're seeing about 550,000 square feet of space. On the Ritu plan, you're seeing slightly over 500,000 square feet of space. So even simply from a math perspective, we were both coming up with similar numbers to what was allowable for the site. We think that's important because one of the things that we want to demonstrate here tonight is the consistency that we've been seeing throughout this entire process as we've been designing. Now, I mentioned a minute ago since the grouping of the buildings. And you'll see here that there's four groups of buildings. None of them exceed three buildings or attach to one another, and I will show you exactly how we got to that analysis in just a second. The light gray represents a building, the dark gray represents a second building, and so on as you go through the buildings from one through four, or excuse me, I should say the groups of buildings from one through four. And where the buildings come together, we have a choice. We can either celebrate that and turn that into something interesting. In this case, we're proposing to do atriums and some other things that really liven up that sense of space, and again, going back to what we think is required from the point of view of attracting a best-in-class tenant. And when I go to this next slide, one of the things that we also included was addressing this aspect of the code that calls for a 90-degree offset, a visible 90-degree offset. So we looked at precisely what that means to do a 90-degree offset, and I'll go through some examples on that. But I wanted to turn back to this slide for just a minute to show you one example of the 90-degree offsets that we've got to be able to have what we think the code was intending, which was to avoid having extremely long facades like you might have on, say, 201 King of Pressure Road, for instance. And so here, we've got a situation where we have the corner of one building ending, transitioning into an atrium space with a stair tower to it, and then continuing on to the rest of the building as you go from left to right on the page. And all of that is obviously something that we think is very important, not just from the point of view of meeting the zoning code, but also from the point of view of making that whole pedestrian main street that I talked about, something that is really friendly and enjoyable and really feels like something that has a lot of visual interest to it that we think is going to be critical for any project to be successful. Now, the next thing that I wanted to be able to express to you is how we're achieving some of these things. I talked about that campus feel, and one of the things that we think is important is trying to take as much of the parking as we possibly can and making that subsurface for the reasons being that it helps us to do a lot of things with the campus that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. Now, this plan that you're seeing was put together by Tim Haas Associates. If you're not familiar with them, they're one of the leaders in these types of structured parking facilities. So we had gone to them, Biomed had hired them, to be able to really figure out how to make this type of environment as safe and as fluid a flow as possible. And most importantly, to be able to make it something that would be viable. And so what I mean by viable, one of the things that really is a big attribute here is that not only do we get the openness and get things like a parking garage out of sight, but we get a situation now where you can have tenants and visitors be able to drive directly in underneath the buildings, come directly up through the buildings or through the parking structure into the buildings, protected from the weather, protected from any of the elements, and all of that being done out of sight as opposed to creating any sort of sea of parking, what we're trying to avoid. Additionally, I wanted to show you these slides because when we came up with that concept working with Tim Haas, we really thought this through. And you can see that we've got all the column spacings clearly identified, we've got all the vertical circulation areas clearly identified, we've got all the stairs clearly identified, we've got all the circulation clearly identified, so that this isn't something that's just a back-of-the-napkin type of sketch. This is something that we spent a tremendous amount of time making sure that all of these aspects of this are truly viable and doable. And then this, you can see, is just simply another level of the plan that is just intended to be able to demonstrate how we've really thought through what it is that we're presenting to you here tonight. So with all that, we had gone through this zoning compliance checklist that you're seeing up on the screen here. And I'll just run through it very quickly. It should be fairly self-evident. First thing is that the site obviously is not less than 10 acres. The next is that the building coverage is limited to the 30% or less. The landscaping is 150 feet from the street to where the buildings start and is at least 45%. The building placement is 150 feet from the street, 200 feet from the side and rear yards, 75 feet from the surface parking to the perimeter, which, again, we think is actually a good thing from the point of view of the way that it helps to really buffer the street there. And then, as we get into some of the other nuances, no building exceeds 160 feet. I'll go over that in a little bit more detail in just a second. There's no more than three buildings attached, precisely as the code describes it. There's visible offsets, as I just described a moment ago, and we'll show you in a little bit more detail. And the groups of buildings attached, which is, I think, another key aspect of the wording and the coding, are not less than 45 feet apart from one another, and in fact, in certain areas, they're actually greater than 45 feet between one another so that we can get more sense of openness and light. And then, of course, lastly, the buildings do not exceed the three stories or the 38-foot height limitation. So talking about a couple of these things in a little bit more detail, this is taken directly from the zoning code. The greatest dimension and length or depth of a building should not exceed 160 feet. It's pretty clear. So we made sure that none of our buildings exceed 160 feet. The next piece of the code says, "And no more than three buildings may be attached to one another." And as I demonstrated in that plan that you saw just a few minutes ago, no more than three buildings are attached to one another. And then it says, "Provided further, that the facade of any building attached to another building be visibly offset from the adjoining building at an angle of approximately 90 degrees." So we also took that to heart, and that image that I was showing you, which I've duplicated here in the lower right, shows how we have that 90-degree offset that's in there. And we'll also show you some other examples of that in just a minute. And then finally, and I think as importantly, the distance to the closest point between the two buildings or group of attached buildings is not less than 45 feet, which, as I noted a moment ago, we've actually got instances where it's actually greater than 45 feet, significantly greater. So with that, I'll also turn attention to some of the things that we look at from a design perspective. And one of those is, as I noted in that drawing, that analysis that I showed you a few minutes ago that looked at the footprints of the buildings in the area, these are a few of the buildings that are in the region, and you can see the lengths of some of these buildings. 201 King of Pressure Road, 310 feet. Radnor Corporate Center, there's a building that's greater than 400 feet, and then you can see some of the others. And even this building that we're standing in right now, 240 feet long. So when we think about it, the code talks about that 160-foot, that's pretty short as a building goes, particularly by today's standards to try and attract a Class A tenant. So I just think this is kind of a very helpful analysis to see if what is being proposed is completely out of whack or if it's something actually that is pretty consistent with everything that we're seeing and observing in the environment around here. And then interestingly, Brandywine, who obviously is a neighboring and competing landlord, their planner proposed a building that was 260 by 240 and another one that was 375 feet, suggesting a while back that those two could be done by right. And I'll show you their plan in just a minute, and I'm using their phrasing about the by right. These are just simply slides to show you where some of those numbers came from. In the upper section, you can see that's 201 King of Pressure Road, which is just up the street. In between our site and 201 is Radnor Racket, 380 feet long. Then we go over to Radnor Corporate Center, another campus that is in the PLO district. And you can see that 400 feet, 350 feet, a parking structure that is sitting on the surface there, and then obviously the other buildings, which are quite lengthy. And then even in the neighborhood right around the corner, really within sort of spitting distance of the building, is Radnor Financial, 350 feet by 425 feet, which by today's standards is really kind of a phenomenal size for an office building. And so in looking at all that stuff, we came back and sort of just did kind of a double-check on it, and we said, okay, so how does all this stack up in terms of the way that the code was originally prepared and how some of these things were originally intended to be perceived? And that's where, the thing that we circled back to was really this question about visibly offset, because it's a little bit of an ambiguous phrase. You know, what does it mean to be visibly offset? Is it six inches? Is it 20 feet? Is it two feet? So we went around the neighborhood and took pictures. This is 240 Radnor Chester Road, and you can see that there's clearly a 90-degree visible offset at the building. This is on the lower portion of the slide, 250 King of Pressure Road, right across the street really from our site. And again, a visible offset there of 90 degrees, just up the road in the same PLO district. 280 King of Pressure Road, a visible offset there, right in the center of the building. And then even at 201 King of Pressure Road, which has that incredibly long 310-foot facade, if you go around to the side of the building that actually faces towards King of Pressure Road, even though the building is something like six stories, they have a 90-degree offset in the facade. So we think that these are demonstrations that clearly show what the intent was in talking about a visible offset and not having elaborated on it further in the code. And then additionally, we've had the benefit of, as we've gone through this process and as Mike Devine has commented earlier about the fact that there have been previous submissions to this as we've worked through this process, there's been pretty consistent comments on whether or not we are going down the right track with this. Gennett Fleming, the township engineer, had reviewed what we had provided on March 6th and on September 29th of last year, and everything that we received back indicated consistency with our interpretation. And most importantly, whatever comments we've gotten, we've integrated those comments into what you're seeing today. The Director of Community Development had also, back in March of 2014, indicated consistency with interpretation of the zoning code. And obviously, if we had a sense that we weren't being consistent with it, we would try and figure out why and dig deeper into it. In any areas where there was comment on it that we thought was, obviously from the officials, we would incorporate that. And then even the Delaware County Planning Commission reviewer stated in his letter on March 27th of last year, again, with a plan that was fairly similar to this one, that the proposed plan appears to comply with the Section 280-64D of the code. So all of those things have been telling us that this plan really does pass muster with what the intent is of the code, but more importantly, it's a plan that Biomed can actually take to the marketplace and make successful, because none of this will happen without that. And it's something that we believe will be what's needed to attract a best-in-class tenant from having done a lot of work specifically in that type of arena before. Additionally, comments from Ritu, who has been brought on by the town, and we're glad that they're here, had this comment, several comments, that we believe bolster precisely the consistency that we're showing you. Most importantly, this quote that is the third from the bottom, which is, "There is a lot of historical treatment and precedent on the way that the language has been applied by the township in the past, and this plan fits that." Excuse me, I think, little spelling error there, but I think you get the point, which is that this plan fits that. And that was a quote that was in reference to what we had been proposing at the time, which again is consistent with what we are proposing today, the key difference being that we've taken into account some of these several comments that we'd gotten, including comments from Ritu. And then lastly, the township clarified and supported, to our understanding, the same 90-degree facade offset as is being shown in the CIDC ordinance. So a couple of other things that we thought would be valuable to show you is, this is a plan that the competing landlord, Brandywine, had presented to the board about a year ago or so, maybe a little bit longer. You may recognize it. And if we zoom into that plan, you'll see that there's a couple of things that are critical to it. One is, they are showing buildings that measure 375 feet long, that are 240 by 260. They're showing little niches in each of those facades that I believe are specifically addressing that 90-degree offset. And so we look at this and see it as just another validation and indication that the way that we are interpreting the code, the code that we all have to operate under, the code that was prepared by some very thoughtful people for this town, is consistent with the way that everybody is interpreting this. Now, there were a couple of other things that were brought up as well, and one of them concerned me because I felt that somebody was possibly trying to be misleading with the codes. And what I'll get at is, there was a letter that we were given a copy of that suggested that a party wall must not be allowed to have any openings in it. And that is true with one major point of difference, which is if the party wall is located on a lot line, in the letter that I had read, it seemed like the letter almost went out of its way to avoid that key phrase in this. And what I'd like to point out is, this actually is from the building code. This is not from the zoning code, because the building code is extremely ambiguous about exactly what is a party wall. There's a generally accepted definition of what a party wall is, which is simply a line or a point that, whether it's a wall or anything else, that is shared by two buildings, whatever that may be. Now, in this code that was referenced, what really bothered me with it is that they chose to point out this Section 7, which is really focused on buildings that are on a lot line. What they didn't tell you about was Chapter 5, which goes into great detail about buildings that are attached to one another on the same lot. And that's what bothered me about it, was that you were getting only a portion of the truth, but not the whole truth. And so I'll show you, as we go through this, that if we look at this piece here, if we go to that same building code that was quoted, 503.1.2, is even titled Buildings on the Same Lot. So that specific piece of the code is very much intended to speak precisely to what this project is about, not to a situation where you have a lot line, say, at a townhouse. Mr. Spangler might own a building, and I am a neighbor next door to his, and between us is our property line. That would be the type of party wall that's being referred to in Chapter 7 of the IBC, whereas what we've got here, as you can see from this plan that shows you where the lot line is and where our buildings are located, really fits into Chapter 5 of the IBC. So I found it troubling because I felt that it wasn't really giving you the facts, the full facts of the picture, and the facts it was giving you were intended to draw a conclusion that was not an accurate conclusion. And I think the folks with the International Building Committee would be really disappointed that they spent all that time on Chapter 5 to have it ignored. So instead of bringing this full circle, we've been very diligent to really analyze that code from every different angle, and that includes not just our own analysis, but also the analysis that we've received from the reviewers that have done this for the town, and even to address some of the public comment. So, you know, in going through that, we've addressed the length issues, we've addressed the number of attached buildings, we've addressed things like the party wall comments, which we think are really more of a fire drill than anything else. And what we really want to turn back to is this question about this campus and what's required to turn it into that. And I mentioned earlier that we are really pushing to try and do subsurface parking on this site because of the fact that we think it has such a fantastic positive effect on not just the site, but the community. This is a photograph of what happens when you don't do some sort of structured parking. This is a building that most people are familiar with. This is are familiar with. This is Radnor Financial. And you can see how intimidating that parking lot feels, and clearly does not feel like a campus, does not feel like something that's terribly hospitable if I've got to walk from my car, particularly from that furthest-most outer ring. And I don't think it's really what Radnor, as a township, sees as their vision for the future of the town, which I think is precisely why the code allows for doing accessory structured parking on the site. Here you've got another building, which is, that last one was owned by the competing landlord. This one's also owned by the competing landlord. This one has structured parking above ground, so it does a little bit better job, a little less asphalt, but still, now you're still looking at a parking structure. And so even there, that sense of openness from the vast majority of the site that people experience, still has an extremely dense and area that is very covered with impervious service, or, excuse me, non-impervious surface. And so it's just, one of those things, it's just not really the direction we want to go. We feel that there's just so much opportunity that we could take the building. So we went back and looked at this picture that I showed you a few minutes ago, that showed where we had the building for 2009 and that subsurface and surface parking, and really came back to the fact that we have a choice. We can either create something that we think is going to be much more closed-in and more feeling like a shopping mall, or we could create something that has a really strong campus feel to it, has all those qualities that attract a Class A tenant, the type of tenant that I think Radnor really wants, and Radnor has the right to, which is that best-in-class type of environment. And most importantly, so that they can attract those best-in-class employees that'll be, most of them, not much of most of them, but a majority of them, what do I mean by majority, a group of them. Sorry, I don't want to be misquoted. But certainly, a good group of them that will be reverse commuting, which is one of the reasons why we think this is such a Class A site. It's already happening today. There's a lot more reverse commuting going on with people living in the city. And so we want them to be able to get here and not wonder, oh, I forgot my car, but get off the train and be able to walk across the lawns and the walkways that are really inviting to the pedestrians, and feel like they've really entered a campus, not simply a shopping center parking lot. So to just hit on a couple of things regarding that, there was some suggestion that perhaps the parking structure might have certain limitations on it that we didn't think were valid. Clearly, the parking structure has limitations on it. The zoning has aspects to it that we need to respect. But there are other things about it that we think are important to make sure we understand. And so on this first bullet, a parking structure is allowed when constructed as an accessory structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. That's clearly one of the things that we're trying to achieve here. We're trying to create that sense of openness. As I mentioned, we could do away with all these walkways, and we could just simply put in parking spaces where we're showing that stuff, and we could add more parking to the surface. We're choosing not to do that. The township's comprehensive land use plan and zoning code promote the reduction of surface parking. So we think what we're proposing to do with subsurface parking speaks precisely to that, and it reduces that surface parking, most importantly. And then lastly, the township has interpreted the code for allowing parking structures. Radnor Corporate Center has a parking structure that's in the PLO District. Biomed's 2009 plan has an approved parking structure. The R2 and the GLACAN plans both show parking structures, as you saw just a few minutes ago. And the sketches with the parking structures appear from everything that we've seen to be acceptable to the people from the town that you've charged with reviewing this and coming up with comments. And so we think that having this allowance for subsurface parking is the only reasonable way to interpret all of the language and all of the evidence that's been put before you, put before us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to make that case. And that's why I make it so passionately to you, is because we think that it's just so obvious, once we really dig into all the bits and pieces of it. And most importantly, my biggest concern is when people come up and they really try and twist some of the language in the code, such as equating allowable with required. You know, required are those code minimums. Allowable is what you're allowed to do as you go through the land use planning process. Those are two very different things. So as we see it, we really have a choice to make. And we really think that the choice on the right is a much better direction to go than the choice on the left. And we think that's precisely what first was the driver for a code like this, and something that we've worked very hard to make sure that we respect as we go through this process. So with that, I will ask Alex to come up and just address a few things regarding the parking calculations.
Thank you, Ross. Alex Tweedy with Navy Newell, the civil engineer for the project. Just to follow up on Ross's discussion with the parking that we worked with, there were some comments and some previous comments in both the township review letters about the parking calculations and some from public comments on that. So we wanted to clarify how we prepare our calculations and confirm that we do provide sufficient parking. There was a lot of questions as to the code in 103B, 280-103B, has a different ratio for the first 50,000 square feet versus the remaining 50,000 square feet of the net floor area on the property. What's important to note is that, as defined floor area in 280-4, the definition of gross floor area is the basis for how much parking is required on the campus. And if you note, the highlighted portion, it notes a building or group of buildings on the lot. So it clearly states that you total all the buildings on the lot, come up with the gross floor area of that, calculate the 80% net that Radnor uses to define that code. And then as clarified by both Roger and Peter during planning commission meetings, you apply that first 50,000 square feet once, and then all the remaining lot area goes against the 300 square feet per floor area for a parking space after that. So doing that math, the parking required for this property at the 550,000 square feet plan is 1,552 parking spaces for the property, and our plan shows 1,950. So with the plan proposed, we are providing sufficient parking and are compliant with the parking requirements for the plan. And we'd like to talk a little bit about some questions on the transportation aspects of the property. I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Alex. John Witchner with McMahon Associates. So as I go into some of the transportation-related aspects of the plan, I wanted to go back to a slide that Ross had presented earlier. Ross walked through some of the details of the site plan, but I wanted to dive deeper into some of the improvements proposed on the site plan. As shown on the plan, on the right side of the screen, Biomed is proposing to maintain two of the existing driveways for the current property. On the right side of the screen is the Southern Driveway. Obviously, it's aligned pretty much on the southernmost property line. It's designed to accommodate a lot of the vehicles heading to and from Lancaster Avenue. Based upon the travel patterns that we've seen in the area, approximately 75% of the traffic in this area or along this corridor is heading back and forth to Lancaster Avenue, whether it's east and west on Lancaster Avenue, or eventually north and south on the Blue Route. The Northern Driveway is placed on the northernmost property line, as it is shown today as well. And it's designed to accommodate vehicles heading northbound toward Radnor Chester Road, Matson Ford Road, things of that nature. As far as driveway improvements on the plan, today, the Southern Driveway has one entering lane and one exiting lane at the driveway. It also has turning lanes into the driveway. The driveway is currently unsignalized. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing two exiting lanes out of the driveway, the first lane being a shared, the first lane being an exclusive left-turn lane, the second lane being a shared left and right lane as you come out of the driveway. And we're also proposing a traffic signal at the driveway to assist in entering and exiting vehicles. At the Northern Driveway today, there is one entering lane and one exiting lane, as well as a center turn lane along King of Prussia Road for left turns being made into the driveway. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing two exiting lanes, as well as a right-turn lane into the site to assist with entering and exiting vehicles. And access to the Route 100 high-speed line to the rear of the property is being maintained. As far as King of Prussia Road goes, currently in this area, King of Prussia Road has one lane in each direction, with a center turn lane for left turns into driveways for Biomed, for the high school driveway, for other uses along the corridor. As part of this application, and based on a requirement in the ordinance, the applicant is proposing widening along King of Prussia Road to create a four-lane cross-section, basically two lanes in each direction. This allows for left turns to be made from King of Prussia Road into the various driveways, and again, is also to comply with the requirement in the code. As far as any proposed signals that have previously been discussed on plans, the applicant is proposing a new traffic signal at the southernmost driveway, at the southernmost property line for the Southern Driveway. In addition to that, the applicant is also willing to construct a traffic signal at the high school driveway to assist with safety for those vehicles into and out of the high school driveway. These two signals will then be coordinated with each other. In addition, this also gives the ability to almost kind of create that missing link, because right now, there's a signal system that runs from Radnor Chester Road to King of Prussia Road, up King of Prussia Road, and then includes two traffic signals on Matson Ford Road. There's also a signal system along Lancaster Avenue from Radnor Chester Road down toward Route 320. And so these two signals along King of Prussia Road can therefore kind of create that missing link. And now, instead of two signal systems in this area, we can combine those signal systems to kind of create a regional efficiency for traffic moving in this area. This creates more efficiency, less delays, and shorter stacking of vehicles. So with all these improvements, we feel as though these improvements lead to a code-compliant plan from a transportation perspective, and accommodate the anticipated vehicles along King of Prussia Road. Also, from a transportation perspective, a lot has been made regarding vehicles being brought to the area based upon the code-compliant plan. We took a look at future vehicles based upon industry standards, as well as transit usage agreed upon with township staff. Township staff, from what we feel is a conservative perspective, is basically capping our allowable transit utilization for future projections, not necessarily capping future employees from using transit certainly, but capping our future projections for transit utilization at 7%. We feel as though 7% usage for transit is modest. It will be higher based upon the types of tenants the applicant is pursuing, the shift in transportation needs by some younger employees, the tendency, as Ross had mentioned, for some young professionals to live in Center City, Philadelphia, and use mass transit for a reverse commute to this area. And also the fact, as I've said a number of times here, SEPTA's regional rail usage is at an all-time high. So we feel as though 7% is certainly conservative, but we agree to move forward under this methodology. So based upon ITE and transit utilization, we compared the proposed campus with the 2009 approved plan that included a portion of office space and a portion of lab space. Now, remember, all the improvements I discussed in the previous slide, the additional lanes at the driveways, King of Prussia Road widening, traffic signals, and synchronizing all those traffic signals together, they were not required under the 2009 approved plan with office and lab. However, but with our improvements, and based upon a comparison of the difference routine, the proposed campus and the 2009 approved plan, we anticipate a change of about one car per minute to and from Lancaster Avenue, and about a third of a car per minute to and from Radnor Chester Road, based upon that 75%, 25% split of traffic patterns that we've seen in the area. So we're creating basically a lengthy list of improvements to be code-compliant for an almost unnoticed change in terms of a per-minute basis for those vehicles. So the two proposed signals, in our opinion, can coexist. They can be synchronized together to manage the transportation flows along King of Prussia Road, both at the Southern Driveway and also at the new traffic signal that we're proposing at the high school. The proposed signal at the high school will improve safety of vehicles entering and exiting the high school. And then during the weekday morning and afternoon peak hours, the signal systems that we're now linking together along Radnor Chester Road up to Matson Ford Road, as well as Lancaster Avenue, can now be synchronized to manage traffic flow from a level-of-service perspective and queue perspective along King of Prussia Road. So basically, the additional lanes for the entering and exiting vehicles at the driveways, the widening of King of Prussia Road, the proposed additional traffic signals, including at the high school access, the creation of a combined signal network along Lancaster Avenue, King of Prussia Road, Radnor Chester Road, and Matson Ford Road can all accommodate that one car per minute heading back and forth to Lancaster Avenue, the one-third of a car per minute back and forth to the north. So, you know, we can go through a lengthy transportation presentation, and we all know I've been there before in front of you, but at the end of the day, we feel as though all these improvements lead to a code-compliant plan from a transportation perspective, and accommodate anticipated vehicles along the King of Prussia corridor in this area. I also do want to turn it back over to, I believe, Ross, to go through some other code-compliant items.
Thanks, John. Really, what we wanted to do was simply to just give you a summary of everything that we just talked about. The first is that we have hopefully demonstrated to you that the plan is compliant with all the codes and regulations, and most particularly explained to you how. And as importantly, that the plan is responsive to the site. I go back to the fact that we've got a Class A site here. This is a site that's really calling out for a best-in-class tenant, which means that the buildings have to have that same forward-looking to it that a Class A tenant is going to be looking for in the market. And it's got to be respectful to the general location. So that doesn't mean just the site, it means the entire community, which is where those analysis that I showed you earlier of how these buildings fit in relative to the other buildings that are in the PB and the PLO District really fit in. And the reason why I reference both of those is because they're neighbors. So, you know, it's not like you pass a wall and then suddenly everything changes in this general vicinity. The PLO District and the PB District share a lot in common. So even though we're clearly operating under the PLO District rules, and I want to make sure that that's absolutely clear, we still look at what the overall surroundings have to them. And we also have, I think, a very clear and concise plan to manage transportation and increase safety. And again, that's one of the things that I think makes this site so attractive to Biomed, is precisely the fact that it's located right at a train stop, it's located right at a bus stop. I can't think of any other site that I've worked at, or even one that I could think of, that is in a suburban location like this, that has those two entities that are literally right at the corners of the site. And then finally, we have received comment from the town. We've worked very hard to make sure that we comply with all those comments, and we will continue to comply with all those comments, whether it's from the board here, or whether it's from any of the representatives that you've asked to do analysis on it. So with that, I appreciate the time that you've given us to be able to present what we think is a really strong vision for what Radnor needs, and also for what the marketplace that we're trying to draw to this site is going to be requiring. And we're happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Well, I will start off with a question. I do have comments, but I will wait till everyone's asked their questions before I give my comments. I think during a caucus, it's very helpful for the applicant to get the comments from us, so that you know where to go. But for now, I have a question. And this is, many of the aspects that the Planning Commission brought up, you've addressed pretty, very well tonight. One aspect that they brought up, that I'd like you to just give a little more detail on your position, and that is their reading of the structured parking zoning allowance. And from what I could see from that meeting, their reading was that if you couldn't put the parking on your surface, you can't then move it to a structure, that the structure was really a replacement, in other words. So I am interested in hearing your position on, I know you touched on it, I'd like to hear a little bit more elaborate detail about your position on that. And then, I'd like to just bounce it off of staff as well, their initial reaction to that position. Now, I didn't see that reading from any of our other commenters. That didn't come from county, that didn't come from anywhere else, but it struck That didn't come from county, that didn't come from anywhere else, but it struck me as something we need to address because you could read that statute that way.
There is something in the Delaware County Planning Commission's letter pertaining to the parking.
But not to this issue, that Planning Commission brought up.
I'll look at it again.
Okay, so I'll let you answer.
One of the reasons why actually George is stepping up is because we wrestled with that same question, because we have the way that over years and years, people have interpreted that exact piece of writing in the code. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to try and talk like a lawyer. I'm an architect. And the way that we've always interpreted it, and when I say "we," I'm talking about myself, I'm talking about all of us who are educated and grew up through the architectural profession, is that the purpose of a statute like that, if that's the right name for it, is that it's really trying to encourage the preservation of open space, as opposed to some sort of one-for-one replacement. And more specifically, and I think George will probably speak to this, is that it almost seemed like what the Planning Commission was dancing around was more speaking to the size and setback regulations that manage that sort of bulk, because you've got so many other pieces of regulation that manage how big your building could be, for instance, the 30% coverage. So to now have something interpreted where somehow the parking, from the fact of whether you could or could not do a structured parking environment, would now be adding another layer of, shall I say, creativity to how the code might be read, was quite unusual to me. I've never seen anybody interpret that way, and so that's precisely why we asked George, "George, what do you think?" Because that's a new one on us. We just can't find any past experience of something like that being what would be leading to the conclusions that they had. So with that, I'd really like George to chime in.
I'm not sure I can say it much better than that. I think we, good evening, I'm George Kraschulik, a pleasure to be with you tonight. I would suggest to you that we would start in our analysis on this particular subject with the idea that the PLO section of your code specifically says you can have a parking structure as an accessory use. We can look to other sections of the code that talk about a structure being on the ground, in the ground. We can talk about an accessory structure being attached, being detached. But the key language that you're focusing on, of course, is removing allowable parking. What does allowable parking? Now, Brandywine wants you to believe that somehow allowable means required. I don't know how that would be possible. I pulled out my dictionary and I looked at a few different definitions of allowable versus required. It just, it can't equate, it just can't equate. What does it mean? To us, again, in your analysis, in your planning in the past, you've looked at wanting to move parking out of sight. You don't want that sea of asphalt. And you've said that before, and you've enacted codes that are very similar to that and mean that, Wayne Business District most recently. So when we talk about moving allowable parking, I think the focus is on how much parking is allowed. In other words, now that I'm moving my hands all around, a required amount is a minimum amount. This much is required. How much more might be allowed is up here. This section of the code in the PLO does not talk about required, it's talking about what's allowed. So allowable can be removed and put underground. It doesn't say all of it must be put underground. It doesn't say anything about you must put all of your parking above ground first before you can move it underground. It only talks about removing allowable parking and replacing it with underground. I think we can focus on just those words, allowable versus required. Allowable is what's permitted to be removed, not what's required, not all of what's required, certainly. That's reading way too much into the code.
Would anybody from staff like to jump in and opine on this?
Well, just a comment. I don't think staff is ready to opine on who's correct. I think there's some merit in both of the letters we received. We just received Biomed's interpretation letter in the last week, and some additional plans and responses by Nate Newell and their traffic engineer, I think on Friday we received. So Kevin and I, and Peter and Kevin and I have met once, we're going to meet again after tonight. We wanted to get both versions. We will then prepare a memo to the board in terms of what we think the proper interpretation is. As you know, there's the zoning ordinance, there's a dated zoning ordinance. There are some provisions that aren't models of clarity in here, and in the SADO ordinance to some extent, but I think this parking issue is a significant issue. Property owner gets the benefit of the doubt if it's a toss-up under the MPC. But there's some clear issues here that we intend to put together what we think is the appropriate interpretation in the board, probably at your next meeting. I think at this point, you have until February 1st to render a decision on this plan. This is the first time it's been in front of this board. There's some significant issues here, not just for this plan, but for going forward for anyone else that wants it developed. I will say that in terms of what's been done in the past, because landowners always like to argue that whatever you've done in the past, you have to do now or in the future. But if the interpretations in the past haven't been correct, you're not bound to follow that. I know there's been buildings built that I have a question about in the past, some of the Brandywine buildings, you approved the plan in '09, where some of these issues weren't even raised. So we're going to look at all that. You know, it is good to know what the history is and how it's been interpreted, but this is a new issue. Some of these issues are new, and, you know, we'll give you our opinion, and then unless there's some kind of an extension before your next meeting, you're going to have to vote yea or nay on the 27th on this plan.
Thank you. I had one other, this hopefully would be a quick question, and this is for our traffic engineer. In the materials, we have the initial request that the intersection, the lighted intersection be at Raider Road and not at the southern, or in addition to the southern. And the applicant has agreed that they would put a signal at that location. We haven't had a response yet from our engineer about whether her opinion is that that would work to have them so close together, and I think you put it, they would coexist so closely together well, whether that could. I mean, that seems to me really close to have two signals coming right off 30, but I'm not an engineer, so I wanted to float that to you, Amy.
I just received that information actually this evening. I wasn't aware that the letter had been written on the 7th, and I'm not sure I would have had a chance to review it, but just based on the information that we're talking about here, I'm still not in favor of that signal at that southern entrance because it is so close to Lancaster Avenue. We had met with the applicant quite a few months ago, and there was some limited discussion about putting in a signal at the northern entrance and possibly the southern. No agreement had been made at that point. My preference would be to have one signal at Raider Road, because I think that would be to the benefit of the motoring public and to the site traffic. I'm not in favor of having those two offset intersections so close together. I think that can be problematic with the signal at Lancaster, regardless of how good your timings are. We look at Lancaster Avenue, and that's using a signal system right now, and we know that we sit in and are delayed frequently along that corridor. So I don't, you know, if I'm asked to give you a quick opinion on what I'm seeing, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I can just add on to Amy's comment. The traffic problem that they address here, I don't think, what they have not addressed the big issue is, is the traffic concerns are not in and around their site. The issues are at Eagle Road and King of Prussia, Matson Ford and King of Prussia, Upper Gulf and King of Prussia, Radnor Chester and King of Prussia, Conestoga and Radnor Chester, the outlying areas. I mean, those are really where the impacts are made to the neighborhoods, and I don't think those have been addressed, and those are the, I believe, the big concerns that we've heard from residents in a while, and those are the ones that need to be addressed.
The other commissioner?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Where is the applicant on the lot area number? You originally had come in with 26.96 acres. The county record shows it at 18.9 acres. The Delaware County Planning Commission claims that it's 18.9 acres. What is your position on that?
There's a variety of different numbers, and it depends if you're talking about deed area or net area, and your code speaks to them differently through the PLO. The deed in the property that Biomed owns is 26.96 acres. For your building area calculation, the code requires you to use that for gross area. Use that gross area calculation. So the building area 30% is against the 27-acre number.
And what about your position on the condemnation? Yeah.
I'm getting to the impervious. So then, for the, well, the landscape area calculation specifically excludes the right-of-way. So that knocks you down, in this case, since we're giving additional right-of-way, it's even a new number, it's pretty much 18.3 acres, once we give the additional 15 feet along King of Prussia Road that we have to. So the plans that were submitted, actually, there's two different MAS you do. For the building area, it's the 27 acres; for the landscape area, it's the 18 acres. We've done the calculations for the building area, even though that's not what the code requires, the building area, even if you use the 18.3 acres, which is not what the code requires, you're still compliant. We're only, we don't even come close to the 30%, even at the 18%. Or 18 acres.
Okay, that was one question. I just, I want to make a comment. You know, there was a comment made by the architect that our code appears to be written in such a way to preserve open space. And I'll just tell you my point of view. I believe the way the code is written, it's written to preserve low-density patterns of development. So if you think of it that way, it's a much different reason. So for instance, if you allow any applicant to come in here and just bury a whole bunch of parking, we're going to have very high-density development. They will be able to put many more square foot of active use on a site because they can dig as deep as they can and put as much parking underground. So if you think of it that way, I don't think the intention of our code was ever to allow higher-density development just because you can dig a hole deeper. So that's really what we're looking at here. And the words to me, allowable versus required. So our code requires for any specific use, a certain amount of parking requires. Allowable may be parking above and beyond that, and we do allow some of our applicants to install additional parking, more parking, and that's what I would consider allowable. So it's a different interpretation, it's not going to suit your need. I'm saying you can't dig a hole as deep as you want and put as much parking underground to compensate for what you need. You're saying that's a good thing for us. It may be a good thing, if you look at Viewshed, it may look better in terms of impervious, but if it comes at the cost of density, I think that's a bad place to go. So this applicant, you know, the applicant's come in with 550,000 square feet, which is about 15% more than the last approved plan at 475,000 square feet. And the only thing I'll suggest, this is my point of view, not the board, that I'm not going to be supporting a plan with that much of an increase in density. If you come back to me, this is only me, I'm one vote out of seven. If you come back to me and say, "Look, we're able to do this plan just shy of 500," I might be willing to do that. I may be willing to approve that. You're going to need waivers. We're not going to, I don't think this board's going to allow your interpretation, especially on the parking. Otherwise, I'm very positive about this development. I've said this before, this township, to be robust and resilient and sustainable, we need jobs here. Okay? If we think that we're all going to hop on the highway and drive 15 to 20 miles to our job, that's a waste of time. Put 1,500 jobs here, that's a good thing. That's a really good thing, especially quality jobs, and I think this site will give us that. So I'm in favor of the plan of building out that site, but not at the higher density, and, you know, I may be willing to agree to a waiver that allows for that parking to go underground, but I don't want to set a precedence where we're allowing parking lots underground, just so buildings can be bigger and take more advantage of the lot area. So that's my only comment at this point, and I look forward to hearing staff comment and understanding where they lie, and our solicitor and our engineers to give us opinions on all these things. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, may I respond to that?
Sure.
I think, it sounds like you and I actually have a pretty close agreement on what that requirement means. I would suggest that you should be looking toward green space and building setback for density controls. That is what clearly in your code, for all of these 44 or 45 years now, have driven density. The fact that you can take allowable parking, let me try that one more time. When we talked before about a must, as I understand it, you had suggested, or someone I should say, had suggested, that we put a cap on what was allowed. So again, I would suggest to you, sorry that I use my hand so much, there's a difference between the required and the allowed. As much of the allowed parking as possible can go underground. That doesn't mean that you need more or less required. Whatever is allowed can go underground. So I would suggest to you, that's not the right way to look at density control. That was never, I don't think, intended as a density control, when you have such a high threshold for building setback, parking setback, landscape space, and so on, which are clear and common drivers of, and control of density. I don't think that was ever considered to be a density control issue. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Sure. So my first, let's call it a question. I look at what Steve Gabriel prepared, I look at what Roger prepared, and I think that most of your concerns seem administrative or feasible. I don't, meaning the, I didn't see anything in what you prepared that was an impenetrable barrier to compliance. I don't know if I interpreted what you sent us incorrectly, but most of what I saw, I saw as administrative or feasible. So do you have any feedback on that?
I do.
Steve Gabriel with for two. Commissioner, I think the one item in our review that does give us most concern is the whole notion of building lengths at 160 feet and connecting more than three buildings.
Wouldn't that be an easy architectural fix, though? I would think that if they ultimately came to your, the conclusion you came to, they would be able to make that adjustment to the building.
As they pointed out, the plans have a lot of consistency, and ours simply made sure that every, every structure, every building that was on that plan, the sketch plan that we presented to this board, were no more than 160 feet in any dimension, and there was 45-feet separation distance. And calculations came out to square footage of maybe 50,000 square feet less than this proposal here tonight.
Very good.
So yes, actually, I think you're right. That could be a fairly easy thing to address.
Roger, do you have any feedback on my question?
I don't know that there was anything in my letter, pending the zoning review outcome that Mr. Rice touched on earlier, I don't know that there was anything in my letter that with some modifications of the plan couldn't be addressed somehow, through engineering or architecture, could be addressed.
That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, and Don, just one thing on what Steve said, and I'm sure John's going to clarify this, the zoning code does say that you're permitted to attach three buildings. So that's our position. That's where we come up with the extra 50,000.
Obviously, I'm going to rely heavily upon the input from staff, so if you have these differences, you know, in my opinion, it's in your best interest to work those differences out. Then regarding the parking, it's quite an interesting issue because I had never thought of it that way. I see both sides. I had always thought that parking is a mechanism to control density. I'd always, it wasn't until, well, I'd always thought that. So that would lend itself to the contrary. itself to the contrary interpretation. But at the same time, I'm not aware of circumstances where that's ever been put in place. And then it would be a significant disincentive to underground parking. Essentially, if you, if you required a one-to-one with a 10 to one or 20 to one difference in cost, you would very much disincent underground parking. And there is a benefit that we get for putting these units underground. So I'm, again, that's another one I'm very interested in, in what you come up with. It might not be a legal issue. It might be a policy issue for us. Because it also, then the last part of that is, those buildings that have that sea of parking in front are not attractive buildings. So I, I see the concern that John Fisher identified, but I see some significant value in interpreting it in a way that's contrary to the way that Commissioner Fisher indicates that he would like to interpret it. So I'm open-minded to that. There was something about the difference of parking structure, a concept versus a plan, is that, is the parking not in suitable detail for you at this point?
The, the land development submission that was made does not have design drawings for the parking, the underground parking. It's just a plan-view layout. It's not an engineered plan with the structures and everything. I understand the applicant has told me that, that is in the process of being done or is done and will be submitted in the future.
Okay. And so from our perspective, if that's in the zoning code, we would have to have that as part of the zoning review, or excuse me, part of the, that's in SADO. So that, that wouldn't be done under building code. That would be done as part of SADO, correct?
It would have to be done under SADO in order to determine the proper number of parking spaces on the site. Right now, or in the plan set that was submitted, again, there was no structural design of the, of the parking garage. So I would imagine they're probably going to lose a few spaces here and there as a result of columns and stairways. And they had addressed that earlier, that, that I think has been done now or is in the process of being done.
Yeah, I think the concern was just to prove that the parking garage shown on our plans is feasible to construct and get the yield we show. Like we said, we've been working with Tim Haas, who is a leader in the parking structure design field. And actually, the plans that were in the PowerPoint we showed were updated to show the stair towers and the elevator cores and all the column locations to ensure it's proper structural base spacing and the connection into the building with the stair towers and the cores were accounted for, and that the parking yield was, was feasible to, to attain. And that will be submitted.
So that will likely be resolved then?
Yeah, we believe that's similar to the, an engineering issue that has to be worked out with staff.
Okay. Next is the County Planning Commission letter. So that was from October. Is that for a different plan than for this plan? Or is that?
That's his plan.
So why is it they're, they're unambiguous in their opinion that it is not compliant with our zoning?
I think the one confusion is there's two planning commission letters, one from March, which was on the sketch plan, and one that was more recently for this preliminary plan application. It was two different reviewers and two different interpretations. And once again, it shows the ambiguity of, of the way the, the building length definition is, is phrased in there.
So I would need that addressed because, I mean, they're, they're unambiguous in their opinion that it's not compliant.
Yeah, but not in the March letter.
The October letter.
Yeah, there was a March letter that he says is fully compliant. The October letter mentions the, the length of the buildings. But then during the meeting itself, we said we would present more detailed plans, which we will present to this board also, showing the degree of separations and things of that nature, which they then stated that, okay, will you submit those plans to us as well, which of course we would.
All right. Next is the, the timing of this. John Rice, this feels a little crammed for us. Typically, we don't have caucus on something this large, one meeting and then a vote the following meeting.
Well, that's, that's really going to be controlled by the landowner because the landowner has to grant you additional time to either adjust their plans, come back in front of this board. Right now, you have a February 1st deadline that you have to vote on this plan and communicate whatever the decision is. If you fail to do that, then they have a deemed approval.
Do you have adequate time to do what you have to do?
I believe so. We, we've been meeting since we received the January 6th letter from Dwayne Morris. We've been waiting for a response to the other interpretation letter we had received back at the end of November. So Kevin's getting his feet wet and jumping right back into it since he's back. And we're going to meet this week. And there'll be a document prepared the end of this week, early part of next week, with what we see as, you know, the issues of compliance or non-compliance.
Yeah, and we'll work with the township on that as well. If additional time is required, we'll grant the township additional time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I would point out that the, the slide showing Radnor Financial Center is not applicable because that's not PLO zoning. So I think it's, you know, that's obvious that that's not a comparison because, guys, guys, you've been up for an hour and 15 minutes. We've heard it all. Secondly, as we know, the Radnor Township Planning Commission and Delaware County Planning Commission are both unequivocal. This plan does not meet the requirements. In addition, as quoted by Mr. Gabriel, he also disagrees with your layout interpretation as being permitted under our code, although he did mess the grammar up a little bit in one point. But we'll give you a pass on that. First of all, the buildings are not offset. The facades of the buildings are not offset at 90 degrees. That's simply, these, these buildings have one facade with some notches. It's, it's not correct to say that there's an offset. And the fact that there might be others, that past, past practice, I might even, I might even address the others. What I'm addressing is this facility and the plan that you're bringing to me. It's obvious that this is not an offset, and it's not 90 degrees. Also, I think you have a very hard argument to say that these, there's three buildings connected. These are one building. You're just calling them three buildings. So if there are three buildings, the point with the party wall is that a party wall would have a, show a line of demarcation for these buildings. That's not what you're doing here. This is one building that you're calling three. So I disagree with that. Now, you can say, well, legally, we can get there. And I, George knows, I'm, I'm a lawyer, I'm a tax lawyer, and I can, I can see where you can make a legal justification that there's not one building. I think as a practical matter, it's disingenuous and incorrect to make that argument to this board. Also, there's deficiencies in parking, as have been noted and laid out at some length. And the parking structures, more detail does need to be provided. And again, the, the other piece of the three separate buildings is, I presumably would expect party wall to go through to the basement and the, and the parking structures below. Irrespective, we also have other folks here, and we're all missing the national championship football game here tonight. So, you know, I, I think if we're going to give some people a chance to, to speak from, the other, the other taxpayer who has been named several times in this, we probably ought to give them a chance and then hear what they have to say. And they'll refute this, and then hopefully we can wrap this. So I want to hear also from the public. I know a lot of people came out, and I appreciate the people who came out to talk about this very issue as well. So I'd like to try to get through as many as we can and, and then wrap it up because this is just a caucus, right?
Any other commissioner comment?
I would like to make my comments now. I have to say, when I saw this plan a couple of months ago, when we got this, this buy right plan for the 550, I, I reviewed it with a bit of dismay. I, you know, I, I know it's designed to the best, of the best ability for what it is constricted by. But it has the feel of a 70s office park because it's has to, because it's governed by 70s zoning. And that's a problem. And it's no surprise that our zoning is dictating a campus like that. And it's, it is, it's dictating a use that we really can't support in this township. We cannot support 550, 100,000 square feet of office space and 1,900 cars that are all going to be coming in and out at the same time. It's not optimal. And it's going to cost us, the taxpayers, a lot of money if this buy right plan goes forward because we're going to be, we are going to have to address the traffic issues that happen off-site. And we're not going to have the applicant to help us out there because it's not in the statute. Because it's a 70s statute that was drafted before we had the type of traffic that we have now. And I, the dismay that I, that I feel, you know, it comes from the fact that this is a very sophisticated community. And we should be able to come up with a better solution for this site. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we still can. I have not deserted and abandoned the hope that we will come up with a better solution for this site than 550, 100,000 square feet of office, all office on this site. This, and I think that the, that better solution will include other uses than just office. And it will include a plan for the traffic that is off-site and a plan for the funding of the traffic that is off-site. And it will allow for more modern buildings that are more in keeping with what design looks like in 2015. This site is one of the most valuable sites in this region. If you read the Philadelphia Business Journal, you know that we've been cited, this little area in Radnor has been cited as one of the most coveted and valuable places for this type of development in our region. We can do better if we work together. And this site is meaningful to us in, in its potential negative impact, but also in its potential positive impact financially. I'm sure many of you already know, since this site has been demolished or is in the process of being demolished, it has been reassessed. And starting in 2015, we are already losing oodles of money because we are not working together to make this a productive site. The school district this year stands to lose a half a million dollars. The township stands to lose about $100,000. That's because we are not working together to keep this a productive site for our township. I feel very confident that we can, and the onus is on us as a community to work together to make this, with this developer, to make this site work better for us. This amount of all office space is not the best-case scenario. It is not the best solution. And this sophisticated community should be able to come up with the best solution. Now, we have hired a planner who we've asked to help us and make a recommendation, what that best solution might look like. And we are on the cusp, I believe, and we will be discussing this later, but we are on the cusp of receiving a recommendation to that end from them. And I implore our community and the applicant and this board to have an open mind when we get that recommendation. And to see if we can come up with a better solution than all office, all the time, at that level of, of that density on that site. And, you know, given, given the misgivings that the applicant is hearing tonight about the buy right plan, the concerns, I, I hope that we can entice a better solution from the applicant. So those are my, my comments. And I remain hopeful. I'm going to end it with that.
All right, public comment?
Mr. President, if I may, from staff, I'll keep my comments brief. First of all, I would say that as Biomed has come forward with plans over the past several years, I think we've seen some good buildings and some good plans. I would say at the least, I'm disappointed in what we see now. And along with Commissioner Schaefer has said that these plans far miss the mark when you say Class A office space. No offense to the architect on your plan, but I think we're nowhere near what Radnor expects and based on the gateway to the business park there. I think we, you've missed the mark, in my opinion, for that site. I'm not real big on, let's run somebody else down to make ourselves look better. I think Brandywine has done a tremendous job in their area. I like what, when you showed the comparison to the Lincoln Financial Center. I love all the cars that are there because that means you're prospering. I love to see all those cars there because that means when you're at 98% occupied, that's a good thing for Radnor Township. I also think when we look at all the other buildings, I think the township has worked over the last two years. And I think we've caught a lot of heat by trying to work long with the tenant there to try to come up with something that's workable. I think this board has as well. I think we're open to continue to work with the developer to come up with something that works. The biggest issue that I've heard a lot is, you know, the transportation, the impact of traffic, of how we're going to control that, whether we bury cars underground or above ground. The issue is, you're bringing a lot of people into the township, how you're going to move traffic and flow in and around the area of impact. Traffic, traffic, traffic is the big concern of how we're going to move that. We went through that with Villanova. We're coming back through that with this one. How do we control that? How do we mix that use? You know, we've tried with hotels, we've tried with other facilities, how we can manage that daytime. And we talked about hotels at one time. We talked about apartments and that. We heard, you know, feedback in regards to apartments not working, but some mixed retail in there to try to shuffle that deck. And I think we've gone completely away from that. So somehow, I think the board is willing to do that. I think the impact from residents have been very good. So I would recommend to this board, I know you're wanting to work with the developer. I think the township is willing to do that, to come up with some plan. We've been at this now for, I think, we're heading past two years to come up with something. I think, as Elaine pointed out, you know, the revenue now has been, you know, is continuing to go down. But also too, we want to come up with something at the end of the day, works for Radnor Township. That's something that works very well. It's something that, it's our corporate park. And I know one resident had told me that that's where the first office building was in Radnor Township. And again, as I think it's something to be able to work together there. And I know the board and the staff, we make that commitment to continue to work with you, as well as all the businesses within that area, that we continue to make Radnor Township, you know, a tremendous location and where businesses want to locate at. So we continue to extend that to you, to continue to work with you, to come up with something very good.
All right. Want to have a public comment?
I'd also say that it's a false premise. This is not a buy right plan. So it's not something that we should be comparing any other alternatives to. So in my view, is until we get a true indication, you can't compare some other solution. The site's not any more valuable than any other. But even if it was, it's not our, our issue. It's not relevant to the township. The township's goal is not to raise money. We are, that's not the goal of local government, to extract money from any developers. So I just, this whole thing is a false premise. We'll see what Mr. Kaplan has to say here.
I'm Mark Kaplan, as you know, and I represent Brandywine Realty Trust. I know you've heard this before, but this is recorded. And some of the people that are here tonight haven't been here before. Brandywine is not against the redevelopment of this site. Brandywine is in favor of the redevelopment of this site. Despite the things that have been said, this is not a competition thing between Brandywine and, and Biomed. Bob, I think...
Can you address the word?
Excuse, excuse me. I, I will. Mr. Springer, I sat here...
I know, but you can say the same thing, okay? You don't, I don't want to go after the manager.
Thank you. I wasn't going to go after him. I was going to say that what Brandywine is concerned about is exactly what the township manager talked about. And that is the traffic impact of this magnitude of redevelopment. And my concern, and Brandywine's concern, is that under this ordinance that you have now, there's no legal way, in my view, that you can impose the things that Elaine is talking about and Bob is talking about on off-site traffic. And I think that's very, very important because I think that's the one thing that we all agree about. It's the traffic issue. It's the traffic issue. So why is Brandywine opposed to this plan? Because this plan is not a buy right plan. Well, why does Brandywine care about that? Brandywine cares about it because they're, they are trying to drastically increase the amount of real square footage that can be a buy right plan. We think the buy right plan is more on the order of 275 or 300,000 square feet. So what we see is an effort by Biomed to convince the board that it will be 550,000 square feet. And whether that means they intimidate you into approving this plan, or they use this plan, this 550, for some future ordinance, we have a big problem with the buy right nature of this plan. So the architect, who I don't know, spent a great deal of time, and I'd like to respond to some of the things that he said. First of all, it's very interesting. He spent a lot of time talking about history and buildings. And I just want to make sure that we get the right facts on the ground. We've talked any number of times and he hasn't been here before, but the 2009 plan, and I have that plan here, or the zoning plan, that was 475,000 feet, John, which I think you were alluding to, is not a 475,000 square foot office building. It is clearly 228,000 square feet of existing research buildings, and the parking requirement is a quarter of the office requirement. This plan, this plan, now that we know that they're tearing down the building, and apparently they've already started, it's irrelevant because it was a plan, it was a modification that they went to the zoning hearing board and they got variances on. So to talk about this plan in the context of interpretations of ordinances and how many square feet should go on the site is simply, it's, it's, it's not fair, nor is it accurate. Now, I, I sat and I listened and I was trying to think, how do I characterize what I've seen in this plan? And here's the way I've characterized it. I represented my first office building client in 1978. I've been involved in a lot of suburban office building developments that have the same matrix, the same overall matrix that this ordinance has. Setbacks, side yards, 40 to 50% green space, a parking requirement of between four and five spaces per thousand square feet, and either a three or four-story limitation. That's the usual matrix. And that's what Mr. Krajulik was talking about, about how density is controlled. Well, what do you get in terms of yield when you apply those criteria? My experience is you get 10,000 square feet, 11,000 square feet, an acre in yield. So what's that mean? There's 18 acres here, times 10 or 11 or 12 is in the 200,000 square foot category. What are you being asked to approve here if we're going to talk about normal suburban office buildings? Do the math. Divide 18 into 550,000 square feet. You get 29,000 square feet, an acre. And that's what you're trying, that's what's being sold as the normal office building. It's, 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 it's just way, way out of line. Now, one more fact, and I think Mr. Booker said it. The Radnor Corporate, the Radnor Financial Center, I believe was originally a, a retail facility that was converted. But in any event, it's not in the PLO district. So why is it even being mentioned? This is the plan. This is... Bob, can I, would you please?
Can I stay near the mic?
Yeah, I, I will. So this is the plan that we've had up till tonight. My letter of comment was back in November. So this is the plan that we've all had since at least November or before November. And what does this show? I think it's pretty clear that it shows four buildings. One, two, three, four. And it shows, it doesn't show, I'm sorry, it shows length of building of over 300 linear feet. It does not show anything close to 160 feet. And 160 feet in building limitation is another one of those things in that matrix in normal suburban office buildings that controls density. It's the 160-foot, and I think...
Could you, could you just not point to them and just talk to the board? Leave them out of it. You're discussing us. Don't keep going back to them and looking at them. Just look at us, please.
We can get through it much quicker if we just let them talk.
I know, I know, but I just don't want you to turn...
I don't know what I did wrong.
Let them talk, Bill, come on.
You keep pointing to them and turning to them, just stay with us, okay? I'm trying to stay with you.
You've got 160-foot limitation, I believe I heard, a 45-foot separation between buildings. Even if you take the plan that Steve Gabriel did, you will see that he respected those requirements. Those requirements, when applied to an engineered plan, control density. And let's go to the, and it's in my letter, let's go to what the ordinance actually says with regard to the distance. Here's what it says. I don't know whether you have my, my letter, Mr. Spengler, or whether you've seen it or not, but what it says is, "The greatest dimension in length or depth of a building shall not exceed 160 feet." That's not up for interpretation. That's a pretty, that's a pretty clear-cut statement. And no more than three buildings may be attached to each other. That's pretty clear. But it's talking about buildings, not one big building with a little notch in it, provided further, and this is a further limitation on the attaching, that the facade of any building attached to another building be visibly offset from the adjoining building at an angle of approximately 90%. Not a little two-foot or four-foot, it is the facade of the building. I think that's what Mr. Booker said before. Well, you don't have facades of these buildings that are at 90 degrees. What you have is a 300 lineal foot building with little notches in it. I don't think that gets you to the compliance with the ordinance. And I don't think it's a matter of interpretation. I think it's pretty clear. It says you can attach buildings as long as the facades of those buildings, and, and a building still has at least four sides, the facades are at 90-degree angles. So I don't think, I don't think there's an interpretation here on the 160-feet limit. Let me, let me move on. Let, let's get to the issue that Mr. Krajulik talked about. And, and that is what's allowable mean? Let me get to the definition that's in here. A parking structure, when constructed as an accessory structure for the purpose of eliminating surface parking. That's, that says, I'm sorry, code section 280...
Eliminating allowable surface parking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, what I, what I meant to say, Mr. Higgins, is that the parking structure, what I just quoted from the preamble to that, is that a parking structure is allowed as a, an accessory use when constructed as a structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. So what Mr. Krajulik's interpretation is, that you just read out of the ordinance for the purpose of allowing surface parking. When I sat here and I listened to him go back and forth, he's just saying, well, that, that provision doesn't mean anything. Well, that would violate every rule of statutory construction because you're supposed to interpret, you're supposed to read an ordinance and incorporate all of the words in the...
But did, did you just read it correctly?
I think I did.
You omitted some words. It's a parking structure, when constructed as an accessory structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking.
I thought that's what I read. If I didn't...
You, you didn't say eliminating and you didn't say allowable.
Yes, he did.
Sure, I did. But what's the difference? You read it correctly, we don't have to argue about it. That's exactly, I agree, that's exactly, that's exactly what it says. Well, if you take Mr. Krajulik's interpretation, you simply read that for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking and you drop it from the ordinance. Because then all it would say is what he wants it to say. We can have a structured, we can have a structured parking, a, a structured parking facility, whether below grade or above grade, as an accessory use, period. Well, for the purpose of eliminating, eliminating allowable surface parking has a meaning. And it has to come back to what Mr. Krajulik and I both talked about. What is allowable? It's allowable after you apply the matrix, you put your buildings on the property, you respect all the side yards, the, all of that, and you determine what's the allowable parking that can be built on that site with the size buildings that you want to build. And if then, what you want to do is put it underground and take those 453 spaces or something like that, and put them underground, or put them in a structured parking deck, you're allowed to do it because you're taking what would be allowable in the matrix, in the plan that has been designed, and you would put it someplace else. I don't think that that's an ambiguous or a confusing interpretation. What else, what else, why, why is there a limitation? The, the, the structure of the ordinance is that we're talking about allowable, I'm sorry, allowable accessory structures. You're allowed the building, and then it, then the ordinance hangs on to that or adds to that, you can only do it for purpose of eliminating allowable parking. You can't tell what the allowable parking is until, until you do your matrix and you have a plan. I don't, I don't think that that's confusing. I don't think that it's subject to an interpretation. I don't know how you read it other than that. I don't know how you read the 160-foot limitation, other than the, the facades have to be at 90 degrees. It doesn't say you can notch it. It doesn't say that as other ordinances I've seen, you have, you have a limitation, but you may have articulation or, or architectural features to break up the wall. This is very clear. You can have 160 feet, you can attach two buildings, and we could get into the party wall business, but I spelled that out in my letter. I think the 160 feet is a killer. I think that the structured parking is a killer from a buy right point of view, from a legal point of view. I think the attempt to jam 550,000 square feet on this property and give us site improvements along the frontage of the property is, I'll, I won't even use the adjective or whatever. I think, I think that this board knows how bad that is. So we are very much in favor of the redevelopment. And Elaine, if the, if the commission, if the, if you decide to do a mixed-use ordinance, you know how we feel about mixed use. We've already given you two different versions of a proposed mixed-use ordinance. We think that the, whatever the mix you choose has to be, the, the quantity of square footage or hotel rooms or apartments or whatever, has to be driven by the amount of traffic that would have been generated under a real buy right plan, not this make-pretend buy right plan. Thank you.
Greetings. I just wanted to comment. My name is Chuck Barber. I live at 228 Hilldale Road. In the 80s, I was on the planning commission for eight years. During that time, I think we addressed this issue about controlling the size of development. And it was specifically done to take into consideration, as Mr. Fisher said, to control the building size and the parking so that the building and the parking is what drove, helped drive the limitations of how heavily you developed the property. And that's the way, to my understanding, we've always handled it in Radnor Township. That's number one. Number two, to address Elaine, before all this started, we met with Biomed over at, at Commissioner Booker's home. And we discussed our thoughts about how to develop the property. And we said that we would be willing to, to, and would encourage a hotel on this property because we thought that it would provide on and off. So when some people is coming to the hotel, they're not going to be going down all of their different roads in the township, but they are in fact going to probably come off the blue route and go back on the blue route, and you're going to control the access. So, you know, we, and we absolutely, at the same time, said that we would do everything we could to stop any development of, of apartment complexes here because that's not what we want. So I think we made that clear. So we, we reached out before any large discussions with this group, trying to get some, some things resolved. And then, of course, they immediately came in with, with some of those ideas as well as the apartments, and then things got messy.
That actually was before I was commissioner, I think. Just, just...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Edrell, and I live on Spruce Tree Road in the township. I, I wanted to address a couple of things. You know, I think I, I share a lot of Mr. Kaplan's views about what, you know, what the real constraints are of, of the zoning ordinance and how they impact this present development plan. And I, I do agree. I think that, first of all, the plan that was submitted by the applicant is based on a, on, on a property that's really 30% larger, 33% larger than what it really ought to be. And that really drives a lot of numbers in a very, very significant way. I think the point about the tabula rasa is a really good one. is a really good one, that, you know, we really, the 2009 variances are really off the table now because as everyone is aware, the property is being torn down. So we're starting over with a clean slate. And, you know, I think that that's, that's where all these calculations should come from first. I certainly echo Mr. Fisher's observations about that, that the zoning ordinance was created in a way to really limit dense development because that's one of the values, I think, of the township. It's as, as Commissioner Schaefer noted, we are a sophisticated community and we know what we want. And I don't think that there's any question that we don't want a big dense development like what, what Biomed has presented to us. Not to be insensitive to the tax revenue issue. I understand what you're saying. I mean, now that the property is raised or once it's raised, the, the annual property taxes that, that we get from it are going to be lower. But you know what? There's a downside of having a development. I mean, let's not be making decisions with dollar signs in our eyes because there are all sorts of consequences down the road in terms of the value of owning property in Radnor Township that I think can be dramatically, dramatically harmed by allowing this kind of dense, commercial office development, particularly when, as I believe it is in this case, not really authorized under the current zoning. You know, I think, I think there have been a couple of things that have happened in the township over the last couple of years that have happened really fast. You know, a lot of you commissioners say, oh, we've been working on this for two or three years or for five or six years. But you know what? I think when it comes to development, slow is better. And if this process is slowed, I mean, if, if, if there's going to be a vote at the next meeting that this is, is before the, the board on, you know, if the vote, the vote should be voted down and, you know, let the applicant come back, go back to the drawing board and come back with a plan that is more in keeping with the goals, the values and, and, you know, the, the ordinances of Radnor Township. And, and let's not look at the short term that we're losing $500,000 or $600,000 in taxes because I think that what we might lose in the long term would be far worse than that. And so I think let's just take it slow. Let's be thoughtful. Make sure everyone has an opportunity to give input. Maybe, you know, ask everyone to sort of wait for a new zoning ordinance that really reflects the values of the township, hopefully after a transparent and inclusive process on that end as well. So I would just say that I think that there are a lot of problems that the current plan that's before the board poses. I don't think it really complies with our ordinances. And I hope that you all will have the courage to expect more from the applicant as well as, you know, all the other competing interests that we face. Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just first point on this issue. It's not really directed to Biomed, the entity, but I'd just like to point out that on tonight's agenda, and agendas are, of course, what the public looks at when deciding whether perhaps to attend a meeting. This item is titled as follows. Caucus preliminary approval, BMR 145, King of Prussia Road. BMR, for people who may not have Biomed in their portfolio. I believe that is, in fact, their New York Stock Exchange identification. That doesn't really inform them as to what this entity is. I would just say that in the future, if Biomed is on the agenda, that it be spelled out as such. Just seems like a simple request. Therefore, anybody looking at the agenda will realize, hey, Biomed's being discussed tonight. It certainly has been very contentious in the past regarding anything that Biomed is doing with development. So hopefully that can be addressed going forward. I bring that up because the last meeting's agenda failed to have in it public participation and that can likewise disincentivize people to come to meetings and to speak. Moving on to the substance of the presentation tonight. Before we get into that, I'd like to note that John Rice, predictably, is not prepared to address the issue. I find that inexcusable. Mr. Kaplan's letter that was addressed and really addressed by inference is dated November 21st, 2014. This is a very, in my opinion, well-written, concise brief. There were some assertions that contentions raised in that brief were misleading. I reviewed the law. I reviewed what Mr. Kaplan wrote. I didn't find anything in there misleading. That's 51 days ago. And six days ago, apparently Biomed or BMR submits a reply brief. And yet still, John Rice is not ready to talk about it tonight. This letter that Mr. Kaplan sent you all was CC'd to Mr. Rice. I have it right here. John Rice specifically CC'd after the signature line. John Rice knew this was going to be a contentious issue. Why didn't John Rice proactively look at the positions taken by Mr. Kaplan in that letter and prepare a memo to you all saying, Mr. Kaplan appears to be on solid ground or, boy, Mr. Kaplan's out to lunch. It's not done. Now, as a result, we have a truncated time period for this board to look at the issue. That's not fair. It's not fair to Mr. Kaplan, who submitted that letter well in advance. It's not fair to Biomed. It's not fair to the public. Biomed now comes in and says that they'll give you an extension of time in order to work through the project, but that's really not how this is supposed to work. You have a timetable. You have a time for submissions and you should have a solicitor who is proactively looking into this issue. In fact, it's not even proactive. It's already been briefed by Mr. Kaplan. All Mr. Rice has to do is verify that Mr. Kaplan is accurately citing the law, which he did. Heard earlier tonight that there are certain people on this board that likewise look up the law themselves. I don't know if Commissioner Schaefer looked at the law cited by Mr. Kaplan, but I do note that Mr. Kaplan's letter was directed to her, to Commissioner Schaefer. Lastly, I have to say that anybody who would come in and talk about parking structures as being open space and view shed determinative, anybody who would come in there, into this meeting and offer that type of advocacy almost deserves to be dismissed out of hand. It's clearly density. There's nothing else that that can be viewed as, okay? Talking about a parking structure maybe being a visual eyesore or wanting to look at it in terms of the scope of open space, that may be a secondary or tertiary consideration. Really, it's about density. So with that being said, I will say that the failure of the township solicitor to be prepared to discuss this topic tonight, it may be inexcusable, but at least he's consistent. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Austin Hepburn, Upper Gulf Road. I, I come here tonight as an advocate for the community of Radnor. I, I understand the, the focus of return on investment for Biomed. You know, I, I understand the, the concerns about revenue, township revenue, taxes. But I'm, I'm concerned about the community and the impact this traffic could have. We have a great community here, but we have a traffic problem. And it's a great piece of property. I think if, if the Board of Commissioners were to work with Biomed to find a solution that would not only reduce traffic, well, we're not going to reduce traffic, but to try and control the amount of traffic and maybe even serve the needs of the community. I've spoken to a lot of people who believe that we need more and better hotel space, banquet facilities. I know a lot of people who would like to see some assisted living in Radnor Township. These are, are, are uses that bring employees in using public transit. Hotel workers, aides, healthcare aides, they use public transit. I don't know if we've really explored these options thoroughly. And so I would, I would encourage the board to vote no. Let's go back to the drawing board. Let's find the right solution for, for the, for the benefit of the community and hopefully take, take into account Biomed's return on investment and the township's tax revenue. But keep in mind the, the community in preserving this great community, community that we have. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Marshall, 228 Walnut. I'll be brief just because I know we've been here a long time and just wanted to reiterate what I've, what I've said in the past about this development. And I think the concern, not only about the traffic, but about the way that this has been presented as land development has been little disconcerting as a resident, as, as a taxpayer specifically. I remember back in March of 2013, we looked at a must-plan that was plus or minus 900,000 square feet. I got very concerned at that point because that's pushing the size of some of the largest high-rises in Center City, Philadelphia. We somehow debated the acreage of the site, 27 acres versus 18.3 acres. That's a 33% greater parcel size. And there seems to be no tax ratable in Delaware County. For the 11 acres, it seems to be in play here right, right now. Disconcerting as a taxpayer. In 2009, I was on the planning commission when relief was given for the 475,000 square feet, 50% lab, 50% office. Tonight, we hear it's a 551,000-square-foot by right plan. The, the 2009 variance provided relief and also increased the traffic. I mean, there was a, there was a going concern there with, you know, Senecor, Johnson &amp; Johnson. They came before the zoning and planning commission. They were granted relief. Somehow magically, five years later, you know, we're increasing the size of that footprint by 75,000 square feet. Two traffic lights on King of Prussia Road, it's nonsense. Try to go out there tomorrow at 7:00, time when I drop my children off at the high school. It's gridlock and the intersection at King of Prussia Road and at Route 30 has already failed. Let's face it. allowable underground parking, interesting. You know, if you do a little research, Liberty Place downtown has about 750 parking spaces underground. This would be three times the size of Liberty Place. Try to figure that out. I, I can't. And the February 1st approval is absurd. It's absurd, given the scale of this property. I would guess that the applicant wouldn't want to go to land development with all these uncertainties facing your board. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for coming and we'll take all this under advisement.
We're going to move now to the last item under Public Works and Engineering. This is Resolution 2015-04, authorizing Gannett Fleming to provide design services for stormwater management at the Wayne train station on the north side. I move the introduction of this resolution. Second. I, I move the approval of this resolution.
Don't everybody leave. We do have another item on here.
Can we share any comment on this item?
I just want to make a plea that the design for this site and all of our stormwater management projects incorporate to the greatest extent possible, you know, sort of forward-thinking, non-structural solutions as well as structural solutions. And I know that our firm, that our engineering firm has that capacity and that expertise. And I just want to, once again, say that we are really looking to tap into that expertise.
Any public comment? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Oh, I didn't see. Well, you didn't raise your hand. Okay. All right. Pass is seven to zero. Okay, community development.
Turn this over to Bob.
I know that we have this on the agenda of whether or not the board wanted to have any discussion and if there was any interest in having R2 prepare anything in regards to any further work on the amendment, zoning amendment or any other additional work. They've pretty much exhausted the work that they have done so far on the PLO in regards to this, regarding the Biomed site. So at this time, I'm not sure if the board wants R2 to do any additional work at this time or if you'd rather hold and see what the results are of your next meeting.
Well, let me just say that the reason we hired R2 was to give us a recommendation and we haven't received that yet. So in my opinion, it's very, it's timely, it's ripe and we should be receiving a recommendation from R2, you know, now. You know, the time for our hand wringing is over. We, we're, it's time to take some action here and we need some good advice from our very skilled and astute planners on how we can handle this. And I'm ready for it and I would love to make a motion to have that happen, you know, at the next meeting. That's my opinion.
Well, R2 did provide a four-page or more recommendation and a review of alternative ordinance or provisions for the PLO ordinance. So, I mean, that work was done and there was an effort, quite a bit of effort put into that. And I, to the contrary, I don't see this hand wringing. I think it's been deliberative and we, we continue to proceed through the deliberative process to obtain the best results for land use planning for Radnor.
I just need an answer from John Rice on this. John, we have an applicant who has submitted a plan. Even if we were to develop new zoning code for PLO, introduce that code and run that through the process, about 90 days, would this applicant be subject to that code change? If they have a, a plan submitted?
No, they'd have to file a new plan. Under the, whatever changes you made, they'd have to file a new plan.
Even though they have a, well, assuming, that's assuming we turn down this plan? But, I mean, if they have a plan of record submitted, is that plan of record subject to the new zoning code?
No.
It's not?
No. Once a, once a land development subdivision plan is filed under your existing in-place zoning code, any later enacted zoning, till that, you know, there's a result on that plan. It's either approved or denied. If you deny it, then they would be subject to any new code in place. If you approve it, they would also have the option to file another plan and have two plans. I mean, you can have multiple plans that are alive when you have that change in a zoning code.
Okay. So Elaine, do you, do you envision us trying to move this along to the point where we have new zoning code for PLO?
Not in time. I mean, it would have to be a voluntary, the applicant would choose to develop under this rather than under their by right.
Got it.
Because they would be incentivized to do it. They, no, they've already vested their rights in their by right plan and whatever comes from that. So this is more if we, if we are, come up with something through a recommendation that is a better solution for everyone, including them, they would choose to be governed by it.
These would be voluntary conditions that they'd accept?
Yes, right.
Okay, I will, I will support that. I don't think doing more than that makes sense at this point. Meaning that this applicant has already been waiting for two years to do something here. The, the thought of us trying to get new zoning code for this site just doesn't make any sense to me. But coming up with zoning conditions for this site that makes sense for the township, that does make sense to me. So I don't know if I'm making sense myself, right? But the point. But the point is, I support your motion, if it is in fact to get an opinion from our planner, that would have, I'll use the term "matrix" elements to it, that would help us quantify and also qualify what is best for that site. But I'm going to be mindful that the applicant, it's the applicant's money, it's not our money. So, in the end, they're the ones that have the right to develop.
I just want to make sure that I didn't miss-answer that. I mean, some of the changes that, in my view, we need are zoning changes. If you want to have another use on there, if you want to put a hotel on there, you can't do it under our current zoning. So, it, in that respect, yes, it would have to wait for the zoning to catch up. However, if we have a zoning ordinance that we all find, that is recommended to us, that we all find very palatable, that our community accepts, and that the applicant accepts, that's where you change course. You don't have to wait for it to take place before the planning starts changing. So, I just want to make sure I
And I had thought we brought in R2 to give us an independent evaluation of the site, not just the current laws, but an evaluation of what's best for our community. And I was expecting one answer, not a menu. And that's what I'd like them to finish up. I don't think there's much more work to be done.
Well, again, they did provide a matrix and a recitation of the issues. One of the things that was highlighted by R2 was that any type of a must would require three or four, three or four lane left-hand and right-hand turns off of Lancaster. They talked about various uses. So, R2 has done this work. They've done this work. You've all received a copy of it. And really, even the way you're talking about this, to me, is not permissible. You're talking about spot zoning for a specific location. We can't write rules for a specific site or a specific developer. If we, if this board chooses to change the PLO zoning requirements, there is a process we should go through to evaluate and to discuss and to agree upon a complete new set of provisions for PLO. It should not be driven by one specific location. And specifically, especially should not be driven on financial concerns about what, how much money the township can raise, absolutely abhorrent to the concept of good government.
All right. So, my sense, the first question would be, what is it that we're going to do differently than we did last time? So, if we're just going to do what we did last time, I don't see any point to the exercise. I still don't think we've given R2 guidance. I don't think you say, come up with a new zoning ordinance that is better for the township, because you have a heavenly host of opinions as to what better for the township means. So, my fear is that we're going to be right back to where we were before, deeply in the details, where everybody is, you know, the sides are entrenched. And again, I think it's one of those ones where we have to move from general to particular if we're going to do it. I don't think it's going to be easy, because whatever solution we pick, there's going to be a sizable number of people that are opposed to it. Agree with Rich very strongly that it has to be PLO-wide and not specific to a particular property. Don't think it's going to be a complete zoning. I think it's going to be a minor change to what we have, that is more consistent with the way landowners want to use property and the way residents want property used. So, to that end, I am again willing to support something that expands the uses, meaning we take the uses that cause that concentrated traffic, and we expand it into other uses that have less intense traffic, and we specifically reduce the number of trips. So, essentially, the variable, instead of building, we're all concentrating on the size of the building. If we shift that variable to the, some measurement of the trips, then I could see myself supporting it. It has to be much simpler than what we proposed last time, for me. I thought that was over-the-top complex, and so I don't see myself supporting something like what we had last time. And then I think what we're going to end up having to support, which is going to be problematic to a lot of people, is essentially, if you reduce the number of trips by allowing less trip-intensive uses, the buildings are likely to get bigger. So, the density is going to increase, which is going to be counter to what many people here said that they wanted, they said they didn't want density that will allow the buildings to get, or they, they didn't want development that would allow the density to go up. But that, I think that's ultimately the trade-off that we're going to have for traffic. If we want less traffic in this area, then I think we're going to have to accept bigger buildings. That might sound contrary to others, but I think that's where the numbers would take us. And my sense is that we should, as a community, be willing to accept bigger buildings in that area, if those bigger buildings produce less traffic. My sense of the variables at play, and this is based upon, in a large part, from the feedback that I get from the community, that the traffic there is a much bigger problem than, you know, the density itself or the size of the building. So, you know, in a nutshell, it's something that I want to explore, but I'm not willing to explore it if we're going to do it the way we did last time.
Do you have any comments?
I think Commissioner Curly, actually, all the comments I've heard here really kind of hit it on the head. We have heard throughout the town hall meeting that was held here, one-on-one resident meetings, discussions with the planning commission, that traffic is a number-one priority. So, our intent, and mixed use, there was an openness to mixed use in all those discussions, and in particular at the planning commission. And we've seen analysis from Gilmore point out that mixed-use development can moderate traffic impacts, because of that off-peak timing that you've all referred to. So, a simpler mixed use, incorporating mixed use within the existing PLO zoning, providing that as a choice to a property owner, having it applied to more than just one property, are all the things that we have in mind, as being what would be the next step to move this forward. And hopefully, be able to come up with something that addresses traffic, will be compatible with the character of the community, and, as Mr. Hepburn mentioned, even serve perhaps needs within the community, through that mixture of uses that would be permitted.
And what's the timetable?
Timeframe to, we've, we can put a, let me refer to a couple of notes here. But we can, we could put a draft, a draft together. It would be our draft, not one ready-for-prime-time public review, but our draft together by early next month. What we would propose to do, what we would see as the best process then, would be first, we would think, as is typical in our processes, to sit down with the staff, who has all this history, and run through that draft. Make revisions based on their feedback, based on what they know in the community. Then, take that draft and meet with interested parties, similar to the parties we've met with already in this initial evaluation. So, Ward 2 Commissioner Booker, biomed representatives, Brandywine representatives, planning commission, Board of Commissioners. Get a draft together then, that this board is comfortable with, comfortable having a community discussion about. So that everyone can then talk about and evaluate, and for their own purposes, whether it achieves those goals that have been discussed tonight, traffic compatibility and serving needs within the community. So, that initial, like I said, the initial in-house R2 draft, early next month. Meetings with all interested, with the interested parties that we've envisioned, and certainly that's, you know, that's flexible. But meeting with those parties, the planning commission and Board of Commissioners, so that revisions are ultimately made after those meetings, so that by the end of April, there is a draft ordinance ready for public review, community discussion.
You have some feedback on that, then?
Sure.
So, first, I like a lot about that. So, what I would suggest changing, one is, I think we need to see a proposal first. So, my sense is, you regroup and you come back with a proposal that outlines this. Second, I feel like we have had, this, we have had so much input on this, that I think that this board needs to be where that, where it comes first. And I would say, before it becomes a draft document, it's a two-page concept summary. It's a description of the mechanisms that you envision, you know, the specifics of the code that you envision changing. Not the language, but it's still just a concept. And then I think this board has to approve the concept, and then if we say yes, we like that concept, then we turn it over to Steve, and he puts it into a draft ordinance. This is a policy decision, not a staff decision at this level. The staff, when they get involved, it's because they have expertise in taking the policy that we decide and putting it into the kind of language that will make it work. But at this point, I don't think it should go to staff before it comes back to the Board of Commissioners.
And what's the budget for this, Bob? As retainer, the budget to do this?
Whatever the board decides.
And that'll be in the proposal.
It can be in the proposal.
All right. Well, can we have a motion for him to bring this back to our next meeting and discuss it publicly?
And I don't think he needs a motion. He heard everything, right? You can bring that back.
Proposal first, and then the next step, if authorized, would be that two-page concept, just in terms of timing.
That's what I think you're putting in your proposal. I mean, that's my opinion on as to how it should proceed.
If the board, if the rest of the board members like that.
Put that into, you know, put that into the proposal, tell us how much, bring it back. And when, presumably, when we approved it, then it would have that process embedded in it.
I like the process you've outlined. I think it's, it's a start. I, my one misgiving about it is that, true, it's policy, but we don't have the expertise that our staff has. So, we're going to be given the structure, this outline, from our professionals that we've hired. And it's going to have implications that we don't really have the expertise to understand. So, I, I think you need some staff input immediately, because any kind of policy is going to have implications that we need to understand on all the PLO properties. And I don't have the expertise.
Right. Okay, so then my thought then is to back away from the specifics. But an example would be something like residential. I think residential is going to be how you're going to allow the site to become profitable and keep the traffic down. But we've heard numerous objections to residential. So, if they come in and we hand it over to staff, and staff starts working toward a plan that has residential, before we, as a group, have decided that we're willing to accept that, then I think we've gone backwards rather than forward.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, consider that.
So, I mean, the, so we come back with, you come back with this two-page strategy, and then we share it with staff and get staff comment at that time.
Yes, very much so. Very much.
And we get to make our decision.
But it's us making the initial policy decision, big, you know, imagine we're using the Sharpie with, you know, not the number-two pencil to make decisions here. And then we can use your guidance to help us at that point.
My view is, that sounds reasonable, but to what end? I don't, we have, we're devising a solution where we don't have a problem. The developer has the right today to build, build out a site. He has approval. He can go and build what he wants, what he asked for, he can build, as long as he doesn't tear down those buildings. The other people in the PLO are not clamoring for us to change what we have. So, I don't see the need for it, as reasonable as what this sounds like. I just don't see the need for it. And obviously, you've outlined, the timing of it is not going to work for this applicant anyway.
Okay, that may be accurate. I don't know. But I'd say that part of my, part of the reasoning to proceed would be that if, first, the developer was in with a plan, so the developer recognized the need for, or the benefit that one could get from mixed use. And then there's a self-regulating component to traffic, and there's a self-regulating component to underground garages. These things get very, very expensive, obviously, and they become counterproductive to yourself, to your own entity. So, if you have an alternative that can be more cost-effective, then you might, you might choose to delay construction. They might have an approved plan, choose to delay construction and wait for this in order to develop under the alternative plan. And that's a pattern that I think is, you know, emerging in other places, or has emerged in other places.
I just want to point out the obvious, that PLO is already mixed use. It's a mixture of laboratory and office. And the industry has changed, the need for laboratories decreasing in this area, and the need for another substitute of use is there. So, I think we just need to move this along. I feel like we, and I take blame for this too, that this is, for two years now, we have basically allowed the applicant keep coming back to us with ideas, but we really haven't taken the leadership. We had an opportunity, when this all started, to say, look, let's just rewrite PLO, to allow other uses, like hotels, housing, it could be senior living centers, it could be a lot of things. And that, but they have to be compatible. But, you know, we, so let's move it along. Let's do this process. Let's get it going.
Do we need a motion?
No. I mean, he heard a good faith, there's a good-faith willingness toward that proposal, correct?
Okay, but can I hear from you that you would be able, be able to come back to our next meeting with that proposal?
Yes.
And the conceptual outline, two-page outline of what you'll be recommending?
You want, you want the two-page outline, next meeting as well?
Yes. Yes.
That would be helpful.
I don't envision that. I envision that the next meeting is him coming back with the process that he's going to use, and not the particulars. And because the intellectual work that he has to do, we have to pay him for.
Do you, are you not in a position, after all the work that's gone into this so far, to give us the outline of what you'll be recommending? I mean, I would imagine you're there at this point.
Yeah, we can provide an outline.
Yes, okay.
It may not be two pages, but I think it's an outline that will give you a conceptual idea of what we have in mind.
Okay.
And let me just understand the scope of this. So, suppose you come back with a proposal, we like it, we're going to proceed. I assume that's going to involve a zoning amendment to PLO, and there's a whole process around that. It takes, you know, on a really good execution, it's 90 days. I've never seen 90 days. I said this before. It takes years sometimes. We don't have years. We don't want to rush it, but we also have to be mindful of what's going on here. Will you put in the proposal, the timeline, give us a really good process map of how you think you're going to get us to the amendment stage? You know, what that process will look like? How many charrettes? How many public meetings? You know, what do we need to, we need to vet this through, it needs to go through the planning commission, it needs to come, go to Delaware County Planning Commission, back to the Board of Commissioners. Any changes, got to go back through the cycle again. So, really, we need to understand, just, that's maybe a paragraph explaining that process again, but we need to understand that's where we're headed.
And I don't, I don't see this as a tactical alternative to the current development, because this will take many, many months. If it is lightning speed, it will take many, many months. And certain people will be opposed to it. A sizable amount of people will be opposed to it. So, we have to be prepared for that also.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, I would hate to see this process take five years.
No.
Okay. Well, Garrett Hill took three, almost. So, let's do it in one or two, and hopefully, one. And during that process, the applicant gets the benefit of seeing that. And like Elaine had stated, they may want to voluntarily request, or request some of these things. And we have the right to give waivers on some of these issues. So, there may be a way to, it's a hybrid process.
Okay, so do you feel that you have clear direction from us?
Yes, I do.
Well, I don't think that he can proceed without, I remain opposed to it. I think it's way too vague. What I hear is that he's going to provide a proposal.
Yes.
That's it.
I, that's my understanding.
It's professional services. We don't need to vote on that. We can put it to vote now, if you want.
We can put it to vote now if you want.
Elaine, you want to make a motion or just put this to bed?
I move that we direct a request from our planner, R2, to come back to us at our next meeting with a proposal and an outline of their recommendations and a proposal of how, and calendar of how that will play out.
Second.
Commissioner comment, public comment, all those in favor?
I'm a resident here in Ward Two. I've been coming out for quite some time, maybe a year and a half on this biomed.
And your name and address is?
Mark Quinn, bit off-road.
Thank you.
Coming out for this for a long time, I, I understand the need for consultants, professional services, you guys have been talking about this for a long time. And I'm a little dismayed with the leadership here. I mean, I really am because when you come out and you hear all these variances, all these, you know, different things, it, it just seems like we're afraid as residents, you as our elected officials, we didn't elect a consultant, we elected you guys. It's okay to say no to biomed. It's okay to say no and come up with a better plan. I was shocked when I saw the agenda today and they're still talking about 500,000 square feet. I felt like we were rewound about a year, maybe longer, on this. So as I said, I'd like to see some direction, some leadership out of you guys. I understand you want to get a consultant. I understand this is a big decision. But on the same hand, we elected you guys, not consultants. So at some point, you're going to have to stand up and have the courage to say to biomed or whatever anything it is, what your feelings are, and give them direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? Passes six to zero, six to, six to one. All right, personnel administration?
No report.
Finance and audit?
No report.
Parks and Recreation?
Just remind everybody, we have the daddy-daughter dance coming up in February, I think it's the sixth, and it's over at the Radner Hotel. It's a great event. Couldn't get my 30-year-old daughter to go with me though, so she thought she might be a little too old. Also, online, you can find a lot of other activities offered by the Parks and Rec, recreational programming group.
Library? Public health? Public health?
No report. They're meeting on the 26th.
Old business?
Redistricting?
New business?
You have anything on redistricting?
What would you like to know?
Well, what we have on redistricting is that the Delaware County Election Board approved our ward divisions and recommended they do the precincts. So they laid out the precincts. And there are going to be a public hearing on that. That was the notice that Jennifer forwarded to us. And that notice will be posted throughout the township. Don't remember. There is, I just don't remember.
They set up three precincts in the second ward, three precincts in the third ward, and I objected to both of them, but it was voted down.
Well, I, I would join you in objecting to that. I, I think that it's going to be unworkable to have three precincts.
So should we be taking some action? I mean, that's, that's a, I've heard that concern. I don't know anybody who is familiar with the details of how these things work, who think it's a good idea for us to have three precincts. So should we be taking some action against that?
Because they have the, they have the legal authority and they're right in their, you know, they don't want to set up a separate precinct in legislative districts, which would, would, it makes a small precinct with Eastern College and just Fenimore and one other, Fairview Road there. And I argue that. And then the third ward, all they did was take 3-2 and cut it in half because when we had the Villanova students under the law, we're over the 1,200. So there's not, there's nothing we can do legally.
They're futile to object.
That's right. I mean, they have the law on their side and, but what we do is we put this into existence. What we can do is have the voting precincts maybe voted the same place. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do, but to go and say, you can't cut 3-2 into two precincts when the law says that it's over 1,200, you have to cut it into three precincts. And when they say that they don't want to do legislative districts, for 30, 30 years, we had a separate voting machine in the area of the third ward that went to the sixth ward with a different legislator. So we had a separate voting machine for the people that lived on Llewellyn, Pembroke and South Wayne and that area. But they're unwilling to do that here. They said, no, we're just going to set up a different voting district. And we talked about it at length and we lost and going to court is not going to, to change that. As far as the ward division, that's done because nobody appealed that, they're just doing precincts now. And they felt they did all the work, they laid it out the best way, and they're supporting their staff in the way that they did it. And they're the ones who are going to have to pay the election board and the machines and, you know.
Yeah, both Bill and I objected, and in fact, I went over ahead of time and sat with them, explained to them, our wish was not to have three divisions anywhere. That, that it's actually going to be, fall back to be their problem when we can't get sufficient people to work.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not a big problem in 3-2. You know, the problem is setting up this little precinct in 2-1, you know, which is going to be very tiny, but we could probably vote at the same place at the high school where they vote. And, you know, you only need one machine and a couple people there. It's, you know, you're going, you're not going to get any turnout unless it's a presidential election, the students from Eastern are not going to come out and vote on a local election. And so it's going to be a very small precinct. But we made the arguments and didn't get anywhere, so I don't think.
So how does that work? You would have both precincts in one location, you just have different machines for each precinct?
And you'd have a different election board.
And so when someone shows up, you'd have to take their address and show them one?
Yeah, they would go here or they would go there, you know?
So that sort of addresses the staffing need.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's going to be unworkable and I think that we should, and I plan to further make known the difficulties and the objections to this. And, you know, the problem is that this is my ward that happened, right? You know, we had, you know, we didn't want to change, we didn't want to change it and we did, and, and this, this is what's occurred. I think it's unworkable and I'm vehemently opposed to it. I think we need to, we need to fix it. So I'd enlist everyone's assistance in, in, in addressing that, so.
January 23rd at 10 o'clock.
We can always authorize our solicitor to go to the meeting.
It's not worth the effort and money, they're not going to change anything.
No, I don't think it is either.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the county, you know, they have the arguments in their favor and, you know, we thought it would be simple, we tried to stay out of legislative district, we did in one little tiny area, and they set up a separate precinct. So, you know, we can deal with that.
All right, are we on to new business?
New business?
I have one brief item. The CARFAC has requested from us, this board, some formal guidance and direction in terms of their recommendations and their predecessor CBFAX recommendations of considering disposition of some of our underproductive properties. I believe Commissioner Curley may have a motion.
Yeah, I'll give a try at a motion and we'll see if this is agreeable. I motion that we task CARFAC to examine real estate mismatched parcels, underutilized parcels or underutilized combinations of parcels, and to develop a short list of properties or combinations of properties that can and should be monetized, present that list to the township, provide a short description of their reasoning so that the township can review and consider, or excuse me, rep, that list to the BOC, Board of Commissioners, so the board of commissioners can review and consider the list. So that would be the motion. The idea is, again, to move from general to particular, that we're not getting into the details of, let's sell this piece of property. It's, you know, here's a combin, here's a property that could be, could serve a better purpose. And it doesn't have to be financial, to your point, you know, it's, and then we would decide if we think that, there would be some public input, if we think it's worth proceeding, we might proceed, we might not. But we'll start off with a, sort of a general description of what we think the areas of concern are.
Sir, a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Raise your hand, a second, John Nagel, second. Any other commissioner comment? Any public comment? All those in favor? Say aye. Aye, opposed?
They've already done this though, they've, they've given us a good list and so.
Passes seven to zero. Public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, just for clarification, in terms of identifying the, the utilization rate of the properties, is the Cressa report the correct one we should be referring to?
Yeah, that was already done, yes, that was done.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
One more item under new business?
Okay.
Thanks. Just want to thank Commissioner Booker, Schaefer and Nagel for your support throughout the process and the entire board of commissioners, for Kimball-Borgat, for the Clemente Crone, starting the work. I know Commissioner Fisher, you've stayed with us for the time that I've been on, been here, for your persistence to continue to get this to the point where actually now we're starting to begin the reality of seeing this park come together with the Parks Board. I know they put a lot of time in with a lot of the meetings and for Steve and Tammy for all your work and time to get this together. And most importantly, the residents of Garrett Hill and the neighbors in and around Clemente Crone Park for all your hard work and dedication and for years of, your years of staying with this, that actually we're starting down that road to starting to see something happen. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you to staff also, thanks.
Public participation?
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Earlier tonight, well, first to preface, when this board moves on certain topics, the usual procedure that I'm aware of is that motion is introduced, there is staff comment, board comment, public comment, and then usually a vote. Tonight, with respect to John Rice, there were some board members that commented before public comment, most notably Elaine Paul Schaefer. And then after public comment, a couple other board members chimed in as to why they thought John Rice was the right guy for the job. One of them in particular was current vice president of the board, Jim Higgins, who gave a throaty enthusiastic endorsement of John Rice, stating that he appreciated how thorough John Rice was, how objective John Rice was, how unbiased John Rice was. Maybe that's true. But I submit there may be another reason. Back on May 29th, 2014, an article was published in the Main Line Suburban Life titled, "Radner Veterinarian Files Complaint Against Radner Commissioner." That commissioner would be Jim Higgins. Now, this article, which is quite lengthy, talks about acts that were occurring in spring 2014. Most notably, Dr. Donato was being cited by the township for apparent noise ordinance violations. The article, at least by my read of it, makes pretty clear that some of those ordinance violations were lacking in merit. Also, the article talks about a criminal complaint that Dr. Donato filed against Jim Higgins in March 2014. The article also talks about a settlement process that was attempted whereby John Rice agreed to dismiss noise ordinance citations against Dr. Donato if Dr. Donato would in turn drop the criminal complaint against Jim Higgins, quoting from the article directly. "I have this guy Higgins harassing me," said Donato. "He's interrupting business. He's telling the police to issue citations when they," meaning the dogs, "are not barking. That's when I filed the criminal complaint against Higgins in March. Close to the May court date for the noise citation appeals, Rice agreed to drop those citations if Donato dropped the complaint against Higgins," said Donato. I must say, it is easy to endorse somebody for a job if they have in the past used money, presumably that the township would be entitled to have as a result of a noise ordinance violation used as a settlement chip if a person would agree to drop a criminal complaint against the commissioner. So I think it's important that that be brought to the board's attention. Second point. And this again goes back to Commissioner Schaefer and presumably Commissioner Higgins, stating that they have reviewed the legal memorandums that John Rice has turned over. A suggestion. Now that you've all heard that I've asked John Rice to refuse himself because he witnessed John Nagel's conduct, the somebody shoot you remark, and because John Rice had the ability, had the ability to claim, much as Commissioner Elaine Paul Schaefer did, that he didn't witness the conduct, never made that claim, ever. And ask you to just Google the phrase lawyer as witness. Easy legal assignment, Commissioner Schaefer. Take you no more than two minutes. You'll see that there's only three very limited times that that can occur, okay? Have John Rice prepare a memory of them for you. Have him explain why any of those three very limited exceptions are present. Trust me, he won't be able to give you an explanation. It's already demonstrated, again, as I pointed out earlier tonight in the Jim Higgins investigation, that you have to step aside if there's a potential for you to be a fact witness. He is. He witnessed it. Because I can tell you, I'm not going to let this matter drop. And if I were John Nagel or advising him, I wouldn't let it drop either. You don't want somebody advising the ethics board who comes to that investigation bringing firsthand knowledge. It's untenable. Please, address this sooner rather than later because it is going to be addressed. And maybe not in a venue or in a way that will allow you all to continue to have oversight into whether or not John Rice is advising the ethics board.
Thank you.
Not quite finished. Last comment. I forgot to talk about this at the last meeting because there were so many other issues to talk about, but we have a new president, Bill Spengler. The John Nagel somebody shoot you remark, as I've talked about in prior meetings, came as a result, not of me personally attacking John Nagel, but because I dare to ask the question, how much is the Radner Conservancy committing to preserving Ardrossen? This issue is known by at least Elaine Paul Schaefer on this board. I know this because Elaine Paul Schaefer has said in multiple meetings, it's less than Nobody to date has pressed Elaine Paul Schaefer or the staff to actually tell the public how much that is. Radner Conservancy, under the stewardship of Elaine Paul Schaefer, John Nagel, among others, for more than a decade, has pushed funding Ardrossen with taxpayer dollars. You're now tasking CARFAC to look at the issue of land parcels. Would it be so hard for somebody on this board so that the public can know, which will go a long way as to how the public will view the Radner Conservancy in the future? I've long maintained that the Radner Conservancy's effectiveness in terms of acquiring land, fundraising, it's, I can't think of a word more appropriate than vapor, nothing substantive. If you can actually get a declaration from somebody as to how much that amount is, more than 10 years, more than 300 members, push, 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 and less than $100,000, it would go a long way. I think you owe that to the public. I think the Radner Conservancy needs to be held accountable. The fact that they haven't come in, even after their former executive director, John Nagel, somebody shoot you, outburst, come in and said, look, that doesn't represent us, here's how much we were planning to contribute, demonstrates that they're not willing to do so. So please, take it upon yourself, inform your constituents, those who may not live in the fourth ward or the third ward, who are now going to be funding major purchase of Ardrossen, find out how much this special interest group has actually committed. It's important. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Have a motion adjourned? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Meeting's adjourned.